I'd like to call to order the June 8, 2009, meeting of the City Council of San Carlos and the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is changes to the Order of Agenda. Mr. Weiss, any changes?
I believe we're good. No changes.
No changes, okay. Item number three, report from closed session, Mr. Rubens.
There are no reportable items from closed session, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Item four, council communications and announcements. Mr. Lewis?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Ramad?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to remind folks that June 20, my favorite event of the year, Vertical Challenge, is going to be here. I love this thing. It's got helicopters. How can you get any better? For folks that are from San Carlos, I would recommend going to the Hiller Aviation Museum, get your tickets ahead of time. There's also a Friday evening event called Wild Brew Yonder. Don't drink and fly, that's illegal, but they have several micro brews from four different groups and a barbecue dinner and all kinds of good stuff. That's going to be Friday night, the 19th. So, hope everybody will be there. I assume, Mr. Mayor, you're going to come in on a helicopter?
I don't know. Should be a work on that. Thank you, Mr. Ramad. Mr. Grokot?
Nothing to report?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Nothing to report from this chair either. So, we'll move on to item five, council appointments and presentations. Item 5A, consideration of reappointing Steve Sanfilippo to the Planning Commission for a three-year term ending 5/31/2012.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Christine Bowlen, city clerk. Tonight, we're asking for a reappointment of Planning Commissioner Steve Sanfilippo for a full three-year term. Mr. Sanfilippo was appointed a few short months ago to fill the unexpired term of a retired commissioner, I believe it was Paul Spagnoli. And I'd just like to also note, we're recruiting right now for the vacancy on the Planning Commission, so I'll be back to you in a couple of months with some more interviews.
And who was the vacancy? Or how was it created?
Alex Phillips was termed out.
Okay. All right, so gentlemen, is there a motion on the floor?
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Steve Sanfilippo to the Planning Commission for a three-year term ending May 31, 2012.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded for the reappointment of Mr. Sanfilippo for a three-year term in the Planning Commission. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Item 5B, consideration of appointing youth advisory council members for the 2009-2011 term and recognizing retiring youth advisory council voting members. Is someone going to speak to this issue? Or not?
Mr. Mayor, I can handle that.
Thank you, Ms. Bowlen.
I believe Jerry Fujimoto couldn't make it tonight, but she wanted to relay that the children had a conflicting appointment this evening, and they'd like to come back in two weeks. However, they would be open to being appointed this evening and come back in person for the oath and the recognition.
Mr. Rubens, can we do that?
That would be fine. You could do that.
If the other gentleman on the council would like to do that, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, move approval of Mr. Vasallo, Ms. Wilshire, Ms. Morrissey, Mr. Plutzer, and Mr. Galouli for two-year terms.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to appoint youth advisory council members for 2009-2011, and we'll recognize the other folks and those folks we do vote in, if assuming we do, we'll have the oath in our next meeting. All those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. 5C, presentation of plaques to retired Transportation and Circulation Commission members Jason Mansfield and Gail McPartland. So, is, are those folks here, Ms. McPartland and Mr. Mansfield? Or at least somebody's here?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Let me give you yours. And then I'll hold this one so I can read it. Both these folks served six years on transportation and circulation, and having served on the Planning Commission for six years, as well as this body now for four, I can tell you that it's, it's not a glory job, especially in transportation and circulation. There's not a lot of, how can we say, people running up and saying, hey, the streets are in great shape and we don't need this or that. So, we want to thank you very much for your service to San Carlos. Again, six-year terms are just amazing, and really, really appreciate both, both your times. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Moving on to the next item. 5D, presentation by a member of Sustainable San Mateo County, Ms. King. Thank you so much. I know you've waited at least six or seven months for this, so thank you so much for your patience, and we finally found a spot for you.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, Mayor Grisilli, and members of the council. Tonight, I will discuss very important issues affecting the future of our communities and tell you, give you a quick demo of our new community resource, the Sustainability Hub. First, though, I want to acknowledge the work that San Carlos is doing to become more sustainable, especially the work that Brian Moore and Al Seve have done in the communities with the green businesses and the GPAC and all that good stuff. As most of you know, Sustainable San Mateo County, small staff and dedicated volunteers have been working for 17 years to create sustainable communities here in our county. We recently had the 10th Annual Sustainability and Green Building Awards, and we just published the 13th Annual Indicators Report. Sustainability means that we will be able to continue to survive and thrive in this rapidly changing world. It's absolutely critical that we make wise decisions about the way we use our remaining land, energy, and resources if we are going to have a good quality of life in the years to come. Indicators, such as the ones in this report, help guide our decisions so that we get on and stay on the right path. This year's indicators report brings good and not such good news, and I'm going to skip all the bad news that I was going to talk about and just say, one of the, the good things I wanted to point out is, you know, children's health is on the upswing at all grade levels. Our children are performing increasingly well on physicality tests and surpass the statewide average. Although unemployment is up in our county, we fare better than the rest of the state. One reason for this is that we have a diversified job base, and this provides economic opportunities for people of all different backgrounds and skill levels. This pie chart shows, which I'm sure you've seen over the past couple of years in the report, that we have a really good distribution of jobs among industry types and company sizes, and that's really good news for the economic stability of our county. When you look at the big sustainability picture, major changes and challenges are coming our way. This means decisions our cities are making right now are so important. Many of the coming changes will be structural rather than cyclical, meaning that we will have to adapt to these changes rather than wait for things to get back to normal. A few of the key trends that are creating these changes and challenges are population growth, resource supply and demand, like energy, food, and water, and climate change. How we manage these problems will determine our ability to sustain our quality of life. So, if you were at the Samsita meeting today, you might have seen that they showed their poll where they asked businesses throughout the county what factors will grow and keep their businesses in San Mateo County. The number-two answers, answer was the quality of life issues. That's coming from our businesses. First, let's look at our population growth. In the next 12 years, we will add another billion people to this planet. California is adding the equivalent of a Los Angeles every eight years, and over the next 25 years, the Bay Area is expected to grow by 2 million people. That's like adding two San Jose's to the Bay Area in the next 25 years. In the area of energy supply and demand, I'm sure there's not a person in this room who doesn't realize that the era of cheap abundant oil that has been the foundation for our automobile-dependent consumptive lifestyle is over. Consumption of fossil fuels has reached a point where demand is increasing while resources are decreasing, and this situation will force huge changes on our society within the next couple of decades already are quite obvious. Another important resource we need to think about is water, and its sustainable state is obviously one where supplies and demand are in balance, but we also need a diversity of supply sources, and we don't have that here in San Mateo County. Ninety-five percent of our water comes from one single source, the hetch-hetchy water and power. Threats to our water supply include rising temperatures from climate change, drought, an earthquake, and population growth. As our population continues to grow, the amount of water we consume will become more and more precious, and this is a serious problem that we cannot continue to responsibly ignore. So, my question is, how will we maintain a sustainable water supply for San Carlos? Let's quickly look at the climate change situation. One consequence of global warming is sea level rise, and this graph shows that over the past century, bay waters have risen over seven inches. Bear with me, some of you I know have seen this, some of these slides. If, depending on weather and how much greenhouse gas emissions can be brought under control, scientists have determined that by the end of this century, average temperatures in California will rise between 3 and 10 and 1/2 degrees. Well, they're already saying that it's the upper end of the spectrum since this report was, was published. If temperatures rise only 3 degrees, the bay will rise another 5 inches. If 10, if temperatures are at the upper end of the spectrum, the bay would rise nearly over a meter over the next century. So, Will Travis, the director of VCDC, shared with me some of his projections of what would happen around the bay if we had one meter of sea level rise. So, this is San Francisco Airport. You'll see that the light blue is where the new water line would be. So, his message to the community is fly Oakland. Although, this is the Oakland Airport, so that's not going to help us a whole lot. This is the Foster City, San Redwood City area. But, in reality, if we get to this point, rising sea levels is not going to be, or the rising bay waters, I should say, is not going to be, is going to be the least of our problems because we will build levees around these expensive areas. What we will be more concerned with is how we get our resources, like our food and our water, and whether the planet's entire ecosystem will remain stable enough for humans to live in a way that's desirable. So, we don't have another 30 to 40 years to think about these things, about living sustainable lifestyles and creating sustainable, truly sustainable communities. We must act as quickly as possible to create more efficient homes and buildings, to good alternatives to the automobile, and make a rapid transition to power generated from wind, solar, and biomass. We have the tools and knowledge to make this happen, like tough green building ordinances. The question is, how quickly are we willing to do what is necessary? I'd like to shift briefly to our housing situation and how our choices affect our quality of life and local economy, in particular, the needs of our baby boomers and seniors. Baby boomers account for a quarter of our population. Within the next 10 to 15 years, 1 in 4 residents in our county will be over 65, and 1 in 5 people over 65 doesn't drive. So, many seniors are expressing a desire to live their retirement years in communities, in their existing communities, but in maintenance-free housing where they have access to groceries and services and their community. Living in a neighborhood that provides easy access to these things, where people can get around independently, will really have a positive impact on their quality of life. So, amenities like safe walking paths and convenient transit options would be a great benefit to our senior population and the rest of the community. As far as the environment and the economy goes, we know lack of affordable housing makes it increasingly difficult for business, local businesses to recruit the people they need at all income levels. Increasing fuel prices will just continue to exacerbate the situation as people start to look for jobs closer to home. A very important economic issue to consider is that baby boomers will be retiring soon, so even if we had no job growth, we will have a huge need for new employees, and where are they going to live? Will they commute in and be reliant on their cars to get around, or will they have the opportunity to live where the jobs are? I should also mention that homes near urban centers and transit are selling faster and at better prices than those that are not in walkable communities. So, change is coming, whether we're prepared for it or not, and we have to find the resources within ourselves to do something about the challenges that we face. We cannot leave them up to someone else, especially not the next generation to solve. We have the technology to do it, we just have to have the political will to make that choice. So, I implore you, implore you as a city council to make sure that in every decision, you consider not only what the city and community wants today, but what we will need in the future. Whether a city leader, a businessperson, or individual, let's make sure that our actions set a good example for others to follow and lead to a good quality of life in the years to come. So, just in case you need help with some of this stuff, Sustainable San Mateo County has been working for two-plus years on a resource that can really help cities take it to the next level, and we also are, this is a community resource for community members, individuals, and businesses as well. It's called the Sustainability Hub. It's a first-of-its-kind community-based web tool for finding and sharing best practices and local resources in San Mateo County. It also hosts the first and only Bay Area Jobs, Green and Sustainable Jobs Board. We did a really extensive needs assessment that revealed the most immediate need is a local sustainable solutions and resource database to connect citizens and organizations with locally relevant ways to implement your sustainability goals. There's a lot of, there's plenty of credible, solid information out there already, so there's no need to reinvent the wheel here, but the hub gathers information that's relevant to us locally and reframes it in a way that's really easy to find, straight to the point, and allows you to take action on those solutions, saving people time and frustrating frustration from searching around this overwhelming sea of eco-information. So, just really quickly, some of the features that you can't see here are, we do have our indicators online now, and the solutions, which are solution articles for all the 33 different indicators of sustainability that we measure, we have solutions for. And again, this is a community resource, so anybody, it allows anybody in the community to participate by submitting, suggesting a solution, and you can comment on the solution that's already in there. It's a little wiki-based thing. And then there's the local resources, which I'll tell you about in a second, and there's an events board for anything sustainable, and this, again, is not just in environment, but economic and social sustainability, and the jobs board. So, this is an example of a resource in the resource directory. Any businesses in San Carlos that are certified green or provide a product or service that help people become sustainable should be in the resource directory. And again, anybody can just go submit a resource right at the website, and then people, the community, can comment on this resource. And then the solutions, it's very simple. Say I'm a city employee or a green ribbon task force person, and I'm looking to create a polystyrene ban in the, in the city. So, I could go on here and find, initiate a polystyrene ban in your municipality, and it would tell you all the little take-action, ways that you can take action to get that done, and who to contact. So, we believe that the Sustainability Hub will strengthen our community and our local economy by connecting the service providers. Also, government programs in the Sustainability Hub, there's search features that you can search for what's happening in San Carlos. So, any government programs that help people become sustainable should be listed in there. But, we really help think that it'll connect people with those that are looking to be more sustainable, sort of a marketing arm for these projects and, and businesses. So, thank you for hearing my presentation tonight. Thank you for allowing me the time, and we look forward to seeing more San Carlos solutions popping up on our Sustainability Hub.
Ms. King, thank you very much. I have not seen the hub. I haven't got on there yet to look at it, but it's intriguing to me, but I have looked at this booklet, and this booklet goes through each city of the county, as well as the county, and talks about what each one is doing, and I think it's great because we can all look and try to pick up the best out of all of it, and I think it's a terrific situation. Thank you so much for coming out and taking the time for us this evening to give us the Okay. Moving on to item number six, public comment. Persons wishing to address the city council on matters not on the posted agenda. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on something that's not on the posted agenda? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on. Item seven, approval of consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Any removals or questions tonight, gentlemen? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, move approval of consent calendar items 7A through F.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve consent calendar items 7A through 7F. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you. Moving on. Item eight, reports to council. Reports to council are updates on key city projects by city department heads and staff and city council subcommittees. They are informational in nature. No action will be taken on these items at this meeting. Item 8A, annual update on green programs and climate change. Following Ms. King's report, it's sort of appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Brian Moore, Assistant City Manager and Green Program Coordinator. As you know, at this time each year, we do the city's annual green report. Due to the length of the agenda, we're going to just go through some highlights tonight and entertain council questions. I think this year's report is the most extensive we've done yet. It's four pages in length, a bulleted report. It, once again, utilizes the approach we've taken from day one, which is to rely heavily on our partners, both in the community and in the region. So, in addition to programs done in the city itself, we also highlight a number of partnerships that the city has with the South Bayside Waste Management Authority, and actually Kevin McCarthy, the SPWM executive director is here tonight, if you have questions for him. We also list partnerships that the city has with both the San Carlos Chamber of Commerce and San Carlos Businesses that have helped us with green programs in the past year, and we note a number of major highlights there, including REI's major solar installation, A+ Japanese Autos converting Priuses to plug-in vehicles this year, a number of awards won by Kelly Moore, Heldon Lau, and Level 3 Communications. We also note the work of San Carlos Green, our local resident nonprofit. We talk about what's been going on with the green business program. San Carlos continues to lead that program countywide. We now have 20 certified green businesses and a number, almost 30 more that are pending. We also did a video this year with Pia Cherry Restaurant and Pebbles Piazza to encourage other businesses to join that program. A new entry in our partners this year is a program called San Mateo County Energy Watch. This is a program that's funded by the Public Utilities Commission in conjunction with the county and Recycle Works, and that program is just starting up. Their first project in San Carlos is to work with the city departments on doing additional energy retrofits on key city buildings that are listed here. We also, this week, are starting up a program to have Energy Watch work with local San Carlos businesses to help them become more energy-efficient and save money to their bottom line. We continue to work with joint venture Silicon Valley's Climate Initiative, which involves all 42 cities and counties in Silicon Valley, and during this year, we've not only completed the greenhouse gas inventory for the San Carlos community, but we are within a month or two of completing that inventory for the city government agency as well. And also, in that area of interest, County Recycle Works and Energy Watch have also been working with us on a proposal to have the county and CCAG do future greenhouse gas inventory updates so that the city staff does not have to do those in the future. And finally, we talk a bit about the city's award-winning climate action plan. This was funded during the year with a $75,000 grant from the Air Board, so it did not cost the city general fund dollars. And what's interesting about this particular project that we did in conjunction with a subcommittee from the General Plan Advisory Committee and also working with PMC, is that this is one of the first climate action plans in California that is integrated with the General Plan. And we've had a number of requests from other cities around the state to present, and between Deborah Nelson, who's in the audience today, and myself, we've made presentations to the Planning Association, to Monterey County, to the Silicon Valley Task, Climate Protection Task Force, to the Air Board Climate Action Leadership Group. This project is going to be profiled shortly by the League of Cities Institute of Local Self-Government, and in September, I'll be presenting with PMC at the League's annual conference in San Jose. So, to sum up, we've covered a lot of ground in the last year. The city continues to be a leader in this area, and I think, given the relatively modest budget we have for green programs, I think we've covered an awful lot of territory. But, with that, let me wrap up and take any questions the council may have.
Okay, Mr. Moore, thank you very much. Questions? Mr. Ramad?
Mr. Mayor, I have one. Mr. Moore, on the page three, you reference four different bills, AB 32, SB 375, AB 811, and then there was another one we had talked about earlier this afternoon, and we were going to see if we can get the right number on that one.
I believe that is the correct number. Basically, the last two bills in that series, AB 811 and SB 327, which we haven't talked to you about before, relate to the programs that are now in place in Berkeley and Palm Desert and are of interest in a number of other cities, where individual property owners, both residential and commercial, can become part of an assessment district, can put a lien on their property, and can use that money for either energy efficiency projects or to purchase solar. The idea is that some of these efforts, particularly the solar purchases and geothermal, because of their large expense, have a long payback, and so the idea is, you could create an assessment district. It could be city-wide, could be county-wide, or could be even larger. And that project, we're actually working with San Mateo County and also A-BAG to explore how that sort of a project could come to San Carlos and also San Mateo County. At this point, it appears that Alameda County has probably the most developed regional program, and so we've chosen to kind of track their progress, and in, in the coming year, we'll probably be looking at some of these legislative vehicles. In the case of AB 811, that was passed last year and is now in law. In the case of SB 327, that's still pending in the legislature, and frankly, I think one of the reasons that we're kind of hanging back a little bit is some of the provisions in there, which would allow us to set up a Mella-Roose funding, are very attractive. So, we're tracking it, but not moving ahead yet.
Thank you. Presidents, Mr. Grokot, Mr. Royce? Okay? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore. All right, moving on. Item nine, Redevelopment Agency. 9A, consideration of requests for payment of tax increment monies presented by the San Mateo Community College District and Sequoia Union High School District. Mr. Seve?
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the Redevelopment Agency. By letters dated April 30, 2009, the San Mateo County College District and the Sequoia Union High School District have each presented the Board of the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency a request for payment for tax increment monies from the Redevelopment Agency. And both requests are based on past agreements entered into with the RDA in 1986, and, and both of those are with those two agencies that I just discussed. The college district's claim has two extra provisions in it requesting additional payments. The 1986 agreements between the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency, the college district, and the high school district were virtually identical and were entered into the time of the creation of the Redevelopment Agency and the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency Plan. The agreements are premised on the understanding that the California school finance system eliminates any financial detriment to the college and high school district with adoption of the Redevelopment Agency Plan. The provisions of that '86 agreement make it allowable for these entities, these, the high, the high school district and the college district, to submit a written request under very clearly defined provisions in that agreement from 1986. The agreement also specifies that they must clearly outline the evidence for those claims. Based on review of these claims, staff and our special RDA council have prepared a letter that would be from the executive director, who is Mark Weiss, to these two, to the college district and the, the high school district. And what I'm going to do is, and these are for your consideration this evening, I'm going to pass these out to the city clerk right now, and I'll come back to the podium and conclude the staff report. Now, this letter that I've provided to you specifies that the requests from Now, this letter that I've provided to you specifies that the requests from these two agencies are not substantiated by the evidence and can't be supported under the provisions of the current agreement. In additions, in addition, I think it's important to note that these requests come at a time when cities across the state of California are facing the most foreboding fiscal crisis since the Great Depression. These letters reject the claims of the districts, but suggest that the agency would be willing to sit down with the high school district and the college district and work cooperatively on this issue in a way that recognizes the legal constraints that we're under with this 1986 agreement. But perhaps we could discuss ways that it could be economically supportive to the well-being of all our agencies. And we have special counsel here tonight. Nikki Murphy is here. She's available to answer any questions. And that concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Suvay. Questions for Mr. Suvay or Ms. Murphy? Gentlemen? Okay, if not, entertain a motion to acknowledge the receipt of these letters from the college district and Sequoia High School, Union High School District, and authorize the executive director, Mr. Weiss, to provide written notice of the RDA board's decision. So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to acknowledge the receipt of these letters and to respond to them. Could we have a roll call on this, please?
Director Amad?
Yes.
Director Grokot?
Yes.
Director Lewis?
Yes.
Director Royce?
Yes.
Chair Griselli?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on. Next item on the agenda is item 10, New Business, 10A, consideration of resolutions adopting the fiscal year 2009, 2010 operating and capital budgets for the city of San Carlos and the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency. Mr. Weiss?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you. This is consideration of our annual operating and capital improvement budget. I wanted to take a few moments to kick off this particular discussion by talking about the state of the city's finances and where we are. I have an hour and 45-minute PowerPoint presentation, which I'll spare you tonight. We are taping it, however, and will make it available on our website as well as the cable access channel. Tonight's, I should indicate too, and gosh, this year more so, I think, than most any other since I've been here at least, my appreciation to the city staff for putting the document before you together. Jeff Maltby, Rebecca Mendenhall in particular, there are changes to this document in terms of its methodology relative to the overhead computations. We've added the core services component this year pursuant to the city council's request and the finance committee's request. And then in particular, this has been an especially tough budget. Last year, we talked about being at the tipping point. This year, the book I'm reading is called Collapse, and there seems to be some connection between what I'm reading and the state of affairs in some respects. The documents before you will, tonight, will include the city's operating budget. It will include the city's capital improvement budget, such as it is. Following that, you will have the fire budget. And following that, you will have a boundary drop agreement that the fire department is presenting directly to the city council. These documents, these concepts contained within these documents are all related. The city's budget, while technically balanced, starts with a premise that we have a $2.7 million deficit. The CIP, which annually would get some funding from the city's general fund, does not this year, and therefore, the city's capital budget is falling into a state of disrepair where we're exhausting the reserves that we've had in that budget to do the minimal projects that are on tap. The fire budget is funded by the city's general fund. There's $6.3 million that's been designated within the city's general fund that is designated for the fire department. The boundary drop just shows how all of us are tied together here. It's not even internal just to the city, but to the peninsula as a whole. Those agreements will put in place for years moving forward requirements and agreements amongst the cities in the peninsula to have mutual aid, to share resources when times require such, and also commits the cities to a certain service level in terms of providing fire and safety services moving forward into the future. So there's commitments here tonight, both with respect to how we're moving forward in this coming year, but also moving forward, you know, we're not in a vacuum. We're not able to stop the earth and drop off here in San Carlos. We are moving forward as part of a larger regional service providing mechanism throughout the peninsula. There are numerous issues contained within the documents, and I won't go into it in great detail, but certainly there are a series of cuts being proposed in this year's budget again. Mr. Maltby and we'll identify those in great detail, but as we've done for the past 10 years or so, we're including a series of cuts in services and programs again this year. They're phased, contingent upon consideration of a revenue measure moving forward. This particular year, more so than in the past, we're using reserves to balance the budget. That is both in recognition of the current economic climate, but as well in recognition of the systemic budget deficit that we have in San Carlos, and an effort to give the community a chance through a revenue measure potentially this fall to determine whether or not it's willing to support through an additional revenue consideration, funding for the programs that we currently have. Certainly, our intent was, we discussed last year, putting such a measure on the ballot a year ago, but we're not able to succeed in that measure and putting that measure before the city electorate, and therefore, it is back this year with the idea that we would use reserves to get through November to give the electorate an opportunity to chime in on this particular issue. One of the biggest points of discussion that have surfaced in my discussions at the town hall meetings, certainly even at some of our study session meetings, in recent reports in the newspapers relates to salaries and benefits. You know, 70% of our budget or thereabouts is tied up in salaries and benefits for city employees. That's also true in fire. I mean, the $6.3 million is a line item in our particular budget, but the great majority of the budgetary expenditures in the fire department are also related to salaries and benefits. And as we have contracts that were entered into just a year ago, that commit the city to 3% to 4% increases in exchange for eliminating bonus programs, in exchange for tiering retiree medical, in exchange for employee contributions on health benefits, in exchange for paring back the PERS retirement pension programs for police, as well as for all of the other employee groups that we have in the city. We've granted small increases in base salary in exchange for all of those long-term enhancements to contracts and long-term givebacks, takeaways, call it what you will, in contracts moving forward, which the city, five, 10, 15, 20 years from now, will recognize incredible, you know, not incredible, but significant and realistic savings moving forward. Paring back, eliminating benefits that historically, in some cases, have been in place for over 30 years or so. The same thing is true in the fire department. The largest increases being granted in personnel affecting the city relate to increases being awarded this year, next year, the succeeding year in the fire contract. 5% to 6%, up to upwards towards 8%. These are increases that are part of contracts. Now, they're legally binding. They were entered into in past years. We constantly get the question, how can you agree and how can you honor those contracts moving forward? Well, the fact of the matter is, the fire department went without any salary increases for two to three years. Their salaries were frozen back at a time when the city and the fire department were saying that, well, we don't have the resources this year to make increases to salaries. And so, in exchange for not granting increases this year, next year, following that, we're going to give 5%. We're going to give equity adjustments, and we're going to make it up over the long term. Those are legally binding contracts that we've entered into good faith in the fire department, as well as within the labor groups that work for the city at large. Potential state takeaways. Property tax is in jeopardy, potentially in the amount of about $800,000. In addition, now they're talking about tapping into--
Mr. Weiss, you sort of flew through that. Why don't you start over with that takeaway and say, the state is going to do that? I'm sorry, you sort of flew through that.
Well, I'm trying to keep with our--
I understand. I apologize.
Being efficient here.
But we know what it is, but a lot of people don't realize the state's going to take $800,000 of our money.
And we have a $27 million budget, thereabouts, in our general fund. And this year, the state of California, because of its budget challenges, is looking to balance its budget on the backs of local governments, as well as making its own cuts and the like. This is something that was done, has been done historically by the state. Changes in state law, in the electorate has put constraints on what the state can do. But if the state declares an emergency, they can come in and take property tax from local governments. And they can take, I believe the percentage is 8% for the city of San Carlos. That equates to about $800,000. That would be taken from us. According to the law, they are supposed to repay that money to the cities. We would hope that they would honor that agreement, just as we honor our agreements with people that we work with. My understanding is, is that they can do that for a period of three years. There apparently is an opportunity, and this would be debated in law, as to whether or not they can do it a second time, and how they would implement a second take to extend that potentially for a period of six years. But the bottom line is about $800,000 that's in jeopardy that could come out of the city's general fund this year. In addition to that, we also receive gas tax monies. We get about $800,000, ballpark figures, in that particular category as well. The discussion at this point is about 75% of that would be taken by the state, again, potentially. That is being discussed currently. That's the value of money that we currently have set aside for resurfacing throughout the city of San Carlos next year. And so our entire resurfacing program is in jeopardy because of that potential take. Those are issues, those are challenges that are lurking out there. We don't have answers. We don't know how quickly the state will act upon those, but those are items for concern. In addition to that, of course, we've talked about the revenue measure. Sales tax, utility tax. We're surveying the community starting this week to get an updated understanding. As you know, a year ago, we did surveys and found 60% to 65% support in the community for a local revenue measure to sustain levels of service within the city. Again, we did not have the opportunity to put that measure on the ballot a year ago. We're going to do that survey again this year to try and give the council a better understanding by the end of this month as to what the electorates take on the situation is this year, given all of the significant changes that have occurred within the economy and with increases in taxes by the school districts and the state itself. We'll report back later. The thought right now is the levels that we're talking about with respect to those potential taxes is that they could generate approximately $2.2 million, not fully enough to offset the $2.7 million that we have. And so we need to be frugal. We need to be efficient moving forward. Certainly, I think this budget that's being presented to you tonight by Mr. Maltby is in the spirit of that particular mode, and we look forward to the city council's consideration and commentary on that. And I will say that all four of these matters are coming before you. And while the fire department actions are coming before you directly from the fire department, I would recommend to you that all four of these actions be approved. You know, we may quibble with certain elements, whether it be the contracts that have been entered into. We may quibble with the formula that's in place for the department, but they're all contracts, they're all legal agreements. They are all things that are necessary for us to continue to provide levels of service and the types of service that we're currently committed to. We believe that they've been prepared by the fire department, by the city staff, by the city council in good faith, and we would look forward to your consideration. But at the end of the day, we're hoping and recommending to you that they all be adopted. With that, I'd like to introduce Jeff Maltby so that he can make the more detailed presentation on the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Jeff Maltby, Administrative Services Director. As I begin my budget presentation tonight, I'd like to start by thanking the department heads and their staff for their help in preparing the budget. With a special thank you to my staff, Rebecca Mendenhall, Marilyn Matum, Tammy Mack, June Nguyen, and Crystal Young for working on actually putting the document together. As you can imagine, it's kind of an unwieldy document. We're getting submittals from all over the city over a period of months, and it takes a good deal of teamwork and coordination to pull the whole thing together. Tonight, the city staff is recommending that the city council and the RDA board of directors approve the attached resolutions adopting the proposed fiscal year 2009, 2010 annual operating budget and capital budget for the city of San Carlos and the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency. A number of assumptions go into building our budget every year as we start at the staff level in preparation to bring it forward to the city council. We were looking at a total revenue decrease this year of 2%. Sales tax decrease of approximately 9% over the coming fiscal year. Property tax decrease of 6% over fiscal year '09 projections. This last year, the transient occupancy tax flat against the '09 projections. Decreases in other fees and services offset by increases in investment income and other taxes. The user fees that we discussed the last council meeting have been put in place, which will be an increase in terms of revenue. We suspect if the use of those services continues at the same level and includes the transfer station franchise fee revenue totaling $1.1 million, which will be transferred from Capital Fund, Fund 25, to the general fund to help balance the budget. In terms of the assumptions, we're assuming that operating expenses will increase approximately 2% this year over base budget. That's for things like professional services, materials, supplies, energy, those types of things that are paid for out of the operating budget. We're budgeting salary and benefits at 100%, including the cost of living adjustments, PERS and medical increases, basically all the provisions of the existing labor contracts that, most of which were ratified unanimously by the city council at the end of 2009, or 2008, rather, and continuing the provisions of any other existing contracts. We're looking at PERS medical rate increases of potentially 10%. Base operating expense increases of 2% for CPI. The other post-employment retirement benefits, the OPEB costs are budgeted at approximately $700,000. This is roughly 77% of the total funding needed, so we're still about $212,000 short there in fully funding those obligations. And funding of $170,000 are only 25% of the total needed for the equipment replacement. As you recall, the equipment replacement was one of the options that was brought forward to the council as part of the budget study session last month, in addition to a number of other options that we received direction from the city council on that we then built the final budget document against. So going over those outcomes, the city council reviewed and discussed staff recommendations for a balanced budget during the study session. Council provided staff with policy direction for proceeding with the budget preparation. Some history, when we get to budget time, every year, I like to take the opportunity to remind council and the public a little bit about where we've been financially. It's easy for us to get caught up in this year, in this moment, and forget some of the significant decisions that we've made as a city, that the council has made as the governing body. And over the last few years, we have significantly reorganized the administrative functions of the city, the community development functions of the city. We've made progress in reorganizing some of the parks and recreation functions. There have been pretty significant changes over the last several years in the area of fire and even in police. We have reduced numerous programs and services in the city over the last nine years as we've continued to practice financially sound practices and find ways to budget our, to balance our budget during these challenging times. We've eliminated 14 full-time positions. We've gone from a high of 125 full-time employees in 2001 to 111 today with potential provisions in this budget that could reduce that even further. In the last three years alone, cuts have been made to the administrative services functions of over 30%. Public works, a 19% reduction. Parks and Recreation, almost 19%. And Police, 7% reduction. In the past, we've had two-year salary fees for all miscellaneous employees from 2003 to 2004. So as you can see, this has been an ongoing financial struggle for-- So as you can see, this has been an ongoing financial struggle for us. We've had five years in a row of one-week mandatory furloughs. A number of other cities right now are just beginning to discuss and put furloughs in place, and, you know, we've gotten a lot of questions at the staff level from those cities about how we've done it, how they've been received by staff, and how we've managed as a city with a furlough. We, this year, in recent contracts that were adopted just in the last six to eight months, the city eliminated paid bonuses for management, police, confidential employees. The council discontinued equity adjustments in the last contract. They cut benefits in terms of retirement by creating a new tiered retirement system, by eliminating retiree medical for new management confidential hires, and creating a 45% reduction for represented miscellaneous employees, new hires in those groups, created some first-dollar sharing for employee medical premiums for active employees. We believe that based on these changes, just in the most recent contracts, our salaries and benefit package are about 5% to 10% below the median in the market that we're in. We've gotten, again, as things have moved on, timing is everything, and our contracts just happen to be up during this financial crisis. So the council was able to work with city staff and partner with our labor organizations and employee groups in the city to make the kinds of reductions we need from the employees to help pick up their share of the financial burden in the crisis that we're in. You've seen, certainly seen, over the last couple of months, a number of articles in local newspapers describing the situation and the efforts that other cities are currently in right now. As we were going through that process last fall, there wasn't a lot of attention yet being paid to the issue, and we didn't get that kind of publicity. But I can assure you that many of the cities that are going through it right now, many of the HR directors, finance directors, city managers have looked to San Carlos for many ideas, inspiration, and advice as they attempt to tackle some of the issues that we've already addressed. In the very recent grand jury report that came out in just the last week or so, talking about employee labor costs, benefits, salaries, those kinds of things, they recommended a whole series of things that, the vast majority of which, we've already put in place in San Carlos. And not one or two, but the vast majority, whereas many other cities around us are looking at one or two, certainly talking about the full range, but trying to be realistic in terms of what they can do. You know, our labor contracts, I think what a lot of people don't really understand is that they're not contracts for professional services. They're not contracts that come with a clause that you can cancel them with 30 days' notice by either party. These are binding, legally binding contracts that we've entered into. The city council, or the city in general, doesn't have the legal authority to break those contracts. The city of Vallejo has spent millions of dollars attempting to declare bankruptcy just to try to break those contracts. And there's current legislation now at the state level that may prevent cities from going that route in the future. I think the city council acted very financially soundly as they addressed those contracts in this budget process, and I'd like to thank you for your professionalism. I know the unions and the other employees appreciate the situation that you're in and all the hard work and effort that went into reaching those agreements. I know the employees, as well as the city management, are proud of those agreements and look forward to continued labor cooperation in the city. You know, that said, in future years to come, there may be additional needs to look at those things. Like I say, we have contracts in place right now. Those contracts will be in place for another year before they come back to the city council for review. This is the list of the schedule right here, talking about when those things will come due. The one contract that's currently open with the city is the Police Officers Association. Currently, the public safety portions of the budget are the fastest-growing elements of the budget, and as the city manager said earlier, a good deal of those costs are tied up in salaries and benefits. So that'll be one area we may need to continue to look at and work on in the future. As they say in the labor relations world, it's very seldom that one contract will get you into considerable bind in terms of raising your costs that much. It's unlikely that in one contract cycle, you're going to be able to fix all the perceived problems of salaries and benefits, but I think that this city council, more so than any council on the peninsula, possibly in the state of California, and I don't think I'm overstating that at all when I say that, has made significant strides in not just talking the talk, but walking the walk when it comes to addressing salaries and benefits of public employees. The philosophy of the fiscal year 2010 budget includes two stages of proposed expenditures. I'm not going to address this too much, as I think city manager Mark Weiss did a pretty good job in discussing this earlier, but the stage-one reductions would be effective July 1, 2009, and have been incorporated into the proposed budget. The stage-two recommendations would be effective June 30, 2010, if a revenue measure isn't placed on the ballot and approved, and of course would be subject to additional council review at the fiscal year 2010 mid-year budget review as part of the city's normal budget process. Additional considerations for the fiscal year 2010 budget would be to, these are a couple of little issues that came up very late last week in the budget process, so we wanted to bring them forward for council's consideration tonight. They were part of the late staff report that got to, regrettably, the staff report that was originally included in the packet was draft two, whereas draft three was the final version. So that got to you a little late. There were two issues, both of them small in scale. The first deals with the, sort of a historical issue from the 75th Anniversary Committee. Apparently, back in 2001, there was an effort from the city's 75th Anniversary Committee to raise funds and partner with the city to purchase a piece of public art, and the community donated approximately $5,000 of private money for that effort. The city agreed to match with about $5,000 of its money. Artist was found and a piece of art was commissioned. The artist eventually defaulted on producing that art. Deposit was paid, a small claims court award for the city was granted, and of course, we never saw a dime of the $3,000 deposit that was paid to the artist. However, there was money, we believe, left over from the community donations of approximately $3,300. We don't have a real accurate record of that. We know that the initial $5,000 was donated to the city. We know the amount of the deposit that was paid to the artist, but we don't really have a record of what happened to the rest of the money. I believe over the years, it was such a small amount, it was just absorbed by the city's general fund. But the treasurer of the 75th Anniversary Committee did write the city manager an I letter requesting that a few thousand dollars of the privately donated money, not the city's matching money, but the privately donated money, be allocated by the city council to the Arts and Culture Commission for the future purchase of public art, and that seems to be in the spirit of what the money was originally donated for. So if the council so chooses, you may wish to, as you adopt the budget this evening, amend your adoption to include the $3,600 for the Art and Culture Commission public art purchase budget. The second item that was brought to our attention was, there was a discrepancy between one of the descriptive forms that was provided to you as part of the budget study session for the Healthy Cities Tutoring Program and the salary and benefit numbers that were actually in the proposed budget document, and there is, in fact, a discrepancy there of about $40,000, too much being reflected in the budget document. The item that was provided to you at the study session is closer to accurate than the budget. So basically, the council can act on this tonight or not by amending the budget. Either way, it's going to come out the same. What's happening here is that the Parks and Recreation staff is making modifications to the staffing of the program. They've shifted hours from a higher-paid part-time employee to a lower-paid part-time employee. That's had an effect on the benefits that are paid and the salary that's paid for those hours. They've reduced some other hours and created some efficiencies in how they're providing the program. That's already happened. That savings will be generated. However, if you want to make the formal change in the budget, you can also amend tonight as you adopt it to reduce the Healthy Cities salaries and benefits line item of the budget by $40,000. That will then have an offsetting effect on the amount of money that we're using from the city's reserves. The fiscal year 2010 general fund budget balancing summary, here are some numbers showing you the deficit, $2.7 million. Some of the money, we added $73,000 in additional programs and services to the budget, created some additional revenue mostly through just updating fees, and then, of course, program reductions in the two tiers and the large transfer of the Fund 25 money, and the 75% reduction in equipment replacement, and then the $500,000 in reserves. And that is basically a snapshot of how we're balancing the budget this year as it's proposed. Let me just back up there. Some highlights of the stage-one cuts in the budget. These are cuts that would take effect at the first of the fiscal year. They include the elimination of the administrative sergeant position for a year at least, being backfilled with a part-time, non-sworn training manager in the police department, elimination of a part-time fund development position in the Parks and Recreation Department, elimination of the part-time admin clerk position in Parks and Recreation, elimination of a rental tennis court maintenance, elimination of IT consultant services, elimination of the Week of the Family funding, further reduction in operating expenses in community development and public works, and a reduction in professional services across the board. Revenue enhancements include the garbage franchise fee that was before the council in the last six to eight weeks, the user fee increases that were before the council last month, the Qantas building lease, which was very recently discussed by the council, tennis court permit fees, reinstatement of the adult basketball, volleyball, and soccer programs, and the revenue in which they will generate. Reduction options for stage-two, effective June 30. These would go into effect on the last day of the new fiscal year, so June 30, 2010, or approximately one year from now. They would be subject to whether or not a revenue measure was adopted by the voters and, of course, subsequent review by the city council at a mid-year budget session. They would include potentially elimination of the Healthy Cities Tutoring Program, elimination of the city's special needs program, elimination of the recreation superintendent position, elimination of an administrative assistant position, elimination of a building inspector two position, elimination of a parks maintenance worker position, elimination of in-house diversion counselor. These reductions would result likely in some layoffs for full-time city staff. Fiscal year 2010 reduction options continued, the elimination of part-time community service officer in the police department, elimination of the employee events that are internal events to the city for our employees, further reduction in planning contract hours in community development, further reduction in operating expenses in the administrative services department, basically any of our contingencies that we use for financial audits and otherwise, and further reduction in the youth center part-time staffing, which may have an impact on the youth centers' hours and operations. The fiscal year 2010 equipment replacement and general capital fund, only 25% of the annual funding needed to fund equipment replacement in the city has been budgeted. No funding has been included for general capital projects, Fund 25. We are hopeful that this year's fiscal year '09 budget will generate some savings, that the audit will reveal in the fall, and we can come back with some funding for capital. But we do still have other needs and other financial threats out there that may yet attach themselves and claim some of that potential savings. This is a summary of the general fund, fund balance. As you could see, the beginning fund balance is there, the revenues for '09, '10, the expenditures, the transfers, how we're moving the money around from fund to fund to meet the city's needs of providing programs and services. Fiscal year 2010 revenue summary, specifically to the revenue, you can see here what's happening as we adopted last year's budget, how it looks to date, what we're projecting for next year's budget. General fund revenues being projected as being down, sales tax down significantly, property tax up just slightly next year, an overall decline in the rate of growth that we've seen in property tax. Certainly, it had been slowing down the last couple of years in terms of growth. Now it's gotten quite sluggish. We're still seeing some property turnover in the city, and the property, the residential market in the city at least, has remained fairly stable. I think it's, you know, we are at the core of a very desirable housing market, and while we're not seeing the large gains, and in fact, we are seeing some decreases in home value, I think overall, if you've owned your home for even four or five years, you're still seeing some positive gains. So when homes are turning over, we are seeing some increases in the property taxes. And then you can see some of the other revenues and fees for service are projected to increase several hundred thousand dollars. This is a pie chart showing you the city's revenues, as the city manager's talked about in some of the other financial presentations that we've given recently. The property tax, which is our single largest source of revenue for the city, and the sales tax, which is our second-largest source of revenue for the city, this year now, for the first time, are no longer combined. Their combined value to the city is no longer enough to fund even just police and fire services in the city. The expenditure summary, as you can see here, a $28 million budget, $28.6 million for the budget, about 70% of that is salaries and benefits. It's the remainder coming from the operating and capital outlay. And then, because fires handled through a JPA arrangement with the Belmont Fire Protection District and through the, to provide Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department services through the JPA, we budget that separately. So in our budget, it looks just like an operating cost, even though it really represents a department cost, if we're brought internally, of $6,300,000 next year. And this is how that is represented in the pie chart. These are our transfers, showing you how we're moving money from fund to fund. You know, the city has several funds. I know this isn't sometimes all that familiar government accounting to some folks from the private sector, but we do have several different funds. You can think of some of the funds, the enterprise funds in particular, like the sewer funds, as almost like little businesses, and those businesses purchase services from the city. For example, the RDA and the sewer don't have their own finance people and their own HR people and their own executive directors and all their own staff, so they basically pay a portion of their way by paying for some of, actually all of our time, to manage those enterprises. And in doing so, we transfer some money back to the general fund to offset those costs. We have made some significant structural changes in how we're presenting data in the budget this year that was important to the city manager, myself, our finance officer, to try to present the budget in more clarity. In previous years, we have really spread out the employee costs and assigned a lot of direct individuals to other funds. This year, we brought everybody back to their home fund, and in a lot of ways, that's been the general fund, so you can see the full costs, and then we're increasing the amount of transfers. So there's less direct cost and a higher amount of transfers. Dollar-wise, it works out the same in terms of transfers, or just about the same, but we believe it helps provide the council and the public much more accurate and easy-to-define information on the costs of individuals and individual departments and services. This is our forecast for the next five years, showing revenues and expenditures. Ultimately, if left unchecked, over the next five years, we believe we'll have a budget deficit of approximately $4 million a year. This is the revenue and expenditure projections. As you could see, the line at the bottom right now- As you could see, the line at the bottom right now with the revenues dipping and expenditures continuing to grow, that's what's great in our deficit. And the projected general fund deficits, and basically what you can see here is what's going to be happening to the fund balances in the city and the city's available cash resources. As those deficits continue to grow, these numbers will drop into the negatives. Looking just briefly at some of the other funds, we've got the wastewater fund, Measure A, stormwater fund, gas tax, Capital Fund 25, which we've talked about, Park and Lou, RDA funds, most of these funds are for capital purposes, and most of them continue to shrink and be rather anemic, particularly Capital Fund 25, the general fund, capital improvement budget, Park and Lou, Fund 27, you see a significant drop in there, that would be the turf field at Highlands Park. In addition, we talked earlier about gas tax and the fact that most of the money, if not all of the money, that's currently being budgeted for street resurfacing projects in this next fiscal year may be in jeopardy from the state of California taking away or delaying the payment of those funds. These are projects, I won't get into detail on these, I'm sure you've had an opportunity to look at the budget document on the projects. We do have staff here to talk about any specifics you may have about capital projects that are being proposed in the budget tonight, but we've got projects in all the various funds, just a few, but we still do have some projects. And then we have pages and pages and pages of unfunded capital projects in the city, and we add more to this list every year, but approximately $50, $60 million worth of projects, some nice-to-have type things that maybe the city just doesn't have the resources to have now or maybe into the foreseeable future. But if you take an opportunity to read that list, you'll see that the majority of those are rather routine, maintenance-type projects, and it's getting to be a rather scary proposition to think that we don't have the resources to maintain and replace some of the infrastructure that we are responsible for. And pages and pages. So in addition to all that rather good news, we do have storm clouds still on the horizon. We still have to come up with another $212,000 to pay for our existing OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits, liabilities. We believe that based on the significant changes that the city council made in that area, as time goes on, you'll see that number drop even if you don't take action, but there are liabilities there that need to and should be addressed. The funding formula for the fire JPA will be up for review, and you could help me out, Mr. Mayor, I believe about a year from now, and so that will be a future discussion in terms of the funding formula and what happens there. The city council, two years ago now, asked us to make sure we continue to provide in the budget document as part of the presentation what would be the cost in restoring some of the police services that were cut over the last several years, and that would be about half a million dollars. The state right now is talking about taking away for one year $900,000, about 7%, 8% of the city's property tax budget this next year. That will be a significant impact to the city. If and when that does occur, we will be back with the council to talk about strategies about how to best address that, be it through reserves, early implementation of some of the stage two cuts, or other potential means or combination thereof. The potential state gas tax takeaway or deferral, if and when that does occur, we'll also, I'm sure, be back with a report, at least on the status of that, but we believe that the major impact of that takeaway would be a one-year suspension of the city's street resurfacing program. We've talked some about the need to, the needs to restore funding for the capital budget, but again, this is one year that it's not likely to happen, and that's an additional $1.1 million hole in the budget. We do currently have the police labor contract open, so we can't speak to specifics on that, but that continues to be a potential source of additional costs to the city. And the 2011, 2012 PERS retirement projected increases could be as much as an additional $900,000 to the city, but that is going to be subject to returns on PERS investments over the next couple of years, and that seems to be changing now, month to month. So that wraps up my report. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know that there's a number of other staff members here that would be happy to answer questions also. So thank you for your time, and I'm sorry I was a little long-winded, but we wanted to get it all in.
Thank you, Mr. Malpe. I would like to do is if we have questions of staff to ask those, and then we have some folks who would like to speak, and then we can get into the further discussion of this matter. So, any questions for staff? Mr. Lewis, Mr. Mah.
I have a quick question. The state take is at what percentage of property tax?
It could be up to 8%.
And do they do that with equanimity with all the neighboring cities? In other words, we only get 13% of the property tax dollar versus, say, 26 cents for a neighboring city, but they're going to take it equally?
Yeah, my understanding is that that particular, that there may be some provisions where they don't necessarily take it equally from one city to the next, but I don't believe that that particular issue is really one of the considerations.
Okay, because I'm just thinking if...
I understand your point completely.
Right, and it's probably worth some research prior to the state take for us to make that argument.
Yeah, sounds good.
So, two cents on it.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Mah.
None at this time.
Okay, Mr. Grokka, questions?
Just a few, based on the presentation that Mr. Malpe gave. You had a slide that had historical changes, and you mentioned we've made significant strides. Do you have an estimated total on the amount?
The amount of...
The dollar amount, savings.
Or what...
You cut 30% of one, 90% of another, 90% of another.
Well, no, there was a...
Wrong slide, sorry.
Yeah, wrong slide. There was a slide that, that one was clear, is it just at least in terms of giving percentages? And I, later, we'll have some questions about that, but I don't want to bring them up now. No, there was a slide that was titled Historical Changes, and you talked about some of the benefit changes and things that we made as a council. Do you have any figures?
The $111, in terms of, in terms of the PERS benefits and the...
Right.
You know, I don't specifically, I mean, we did provide all that information when we were, to the council when we were going through them, piece by piece, in terms of each benefit. Obviously, they change, they could change moment to moment, depending on if we get a new employee, if, you know, we have a retirement or somebody leaves the city and a new employee joins the city. Most of those changes, the most significant portion of those changes were based on future employees joining the city, but for example, but not all of it. I mean, there were significant changes in terms of the pay-for-performance bonuses that management and confidential gave up. That's equivalent to about 3.5% of salary for those groups going forward, this, in this coming year, that would otherwise be paid, so I mean, that's, those are real dollars.
Now, on those, if I can jump in, those weren't guaranteed going out, they were based on performance and valuations and so forth. So those were bonuses, not necessarily, can't even, I guess we have to budget for it in some regards, but there's no, it's not like promise to the employee.
Right, they weren't guaranteed, so what we, what we did when we looked at the costs of those particular benefits was we looked at the history over the last few years of each group in terms of what was paid out, and we assumed that that trend would likely have continued in the future, and calculated that for savings, as opposed to just saying, well, the maximum you could get is 4%, so let's represent 4% as the savings. We tried to be as accurate as we could with the historical trend. Another area where we made, you know, real reductions was to the active employee medical ready, so any future increases now with our employees, we lowered the cap for the city to 8% for management and confidential, 9% for the unions, so that was a reduction in the cap that the city will pay up to in terms of an increase. After that, the employee pays all of it. We also created a first-dollar sharing relationship with the, with the groups, so that even on dollar one, they have a responsibility to pay 5% of their medical premiums in the future. The retirement medical changes go beyond just the reduction in benefits, but we significantly restructured those benefits, even for active employees that change the entitlement of the benefit in terms of post-retirement increases, to try to break the cycle, and that has real, real savings to the city. And then, of course, the tiered components in terms of creating a completely new system for those folks who haven't retired yet or new employees, as well as the tiered retirement plans, which are already beginning, you know, we do have at least one management employee now, a number of employees in the police department who are now covered by the Tier Two system, so those costs will increase, will grow in the future, and we estimate that that's worth, will eventually be worth a savings of 4%, 5%, 6%. So when you combine all those things, it's pretty significant in terms of, of the reductions that were made in the contracts. And like I said earlier, I don't think you can hope to address everything in one contract, but I think if you want to call, you know, if you want to use this as the touchstone for a sort of change in terms of the direction the city was taking with its labor contracts, I think it could certainly be viewed as a very significant first step in addressing a lot of the issues that are being recommended by the grand jury and others.
But again, in terms of a first fiscal year or something like that, we don't really have a grasp of what that number might be.
No, I mean, some I, some I do, you know, some I don't have them off the top of my head right now, but I can get them for you. Others, it's still very nebulous. The post-employment benefits will come out if we do, we probably won't do an actuarial study this next year, because we just did one several months ago, but in the, in the subsequent one, two years or a year and a half from now, I think you'll start to see some of those costs reflected, some of the savings reflected there, but it'll be an ongoing process.
Okay, and then, two more questions I have is, there was a slide you had with a bunch of eliminations that if this happens, then these are the things that are on the chopping block, and that's in our document here, too.
The stage two stuff or the stage one stuff?
Well, either one, actually, I guess. I, I, no, I take that back, just the stage two.
Okay.
Now, even though those are in the document, those are things that would be looked at again when we get closer to the cause.
That's correct.
Correct?
Because those are timed to go into effect at the end of the fiscal year, as the budget comes back to you, typically in February, when we do the mid-year update, the council, it's certainly within the council's purview to review those decisions and make changes, changes to direction. It's just, as we're trying to adopt a budget, the council wants to adopt a budget package that is balanced, so at the study session, you identified those as being what I would call the most likely reductions at that particular time, but there certainly was a caveat and discussion from the city council that you did expect to have a second opportunity to discuss those as part of the mid-year budget. So we will highlight those things when we bring them back in February.
Through the chair, and just to clarify that point, because I think there's a couple items in there that we specifically didn't, we want to have further discussion on. I think that's staff suggestion, and I think that they're solid suggestions, and certainly the monetary figure is a solid monetary figure, but I think it's safe to say that, you know, the council wanted, A, preserve that discussion till December, given perspective on the revenue measure, potential revenue measure, I should say, and also perspective on, you know, an election year.
And then, the last question I had is, you had talked about not breaking contracts, and I can certainly understand that, but couldn't, the option still would be open to us, would it not, to ask labor groups to go back into negotiations and say, hey, we're in a situation here, we need to bring you back to the table, if you would, and ask for, to open up negotiations? I think I've seen some other cities and municipalities do that, and, if you would. And we have other groups, you know, we have labor groups, and we have management, certainly, you know, city manager, city attorney, other positions where we could go back and ask for, to open negotiations with those kinds of things, too. Is that...
It's correct.
Correct?
The city can always ask. My comment was simply meant to say, in this case, the city, the city doesn't have any authority to direct any change.
No, I wouldn't think so, we can't just break a contract.
But certainly, we can, we can always ask. If that's the direction of the city council, the unions may choose to sit down with us, they may not. I think, you know, the unions are very aware, and, you know, they're the same unions here that are in other cities around us, for the most part, and so they're aware of, you know, we're aware of what they're doing right now, but they're also aware of what they just did here in the context of this financial crisis. So I think they know, they feel like they've given up quite a bit, and quite a bit more in comparison to what they're being asked to give up in other cities right now.
Isn't that, though, you know, we read about some things the governor's done, and that's what he's done. He's asked some of these groups. I thought I read an article about, an article that had comments by the AFSMI manager, or whatever the person is called, and they were commenting on negotiations that they'd had with the governor. So that's what's going on there, is the governor's asked them to come back to the table and say...
Unless their contracts actually happen to be open right now, and they're, they're actually going through a process.
Right, thank you. That's it for now.
Mr. Mah, okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Malpe. We've got some folks who would like to speak here. We'd like to keep the comments to about two minutes for the folks who would like to speak. I've got about five or six speaker slips, and if anyone else would like to speak, please fill out a speaker slip and pass it up here, and we'll, we'll get everybody organized. The first person I have is Larry Souza. Mr. Souza?
Mayor Grisini and members of the city council. Thank you for allowing me a chance to speak on behalf of the special needs program. By way of introduction, my name is Larry Souza. My family and I have lived in San Carlos since 1968, and my business is a woodwind and brass instrument sales and repair at Hornicopia on Laurel Street. My daughter Adrienne, who is here with me tonight, has been involved in special needs programs since 1966 at age seven. Years ago, I spoke to the city council in support of the special needs program, which at that time was facing one of many budget cuts. I told them the story of a typical day at our home before she became involved in special needs. Adrienne played alone, and other children in the neighborhood seldom rang or, if ever, the doorbell to ask if she would come out and play. It wasn't until her younger sister developed friends did Adrienne become included in neighborhood activities. When she became involved in special needs, her social skills developed, and along with a circle of friends that she still associates with after 30 years later. Since then, she has developed into a wonderful young lady who proudly takes the train and bus to work and four days a week, and she also gives back to the community by volunteering at Litten Garden Senior Community in Palo Alto two days a week, serving coffee, tea, and drinks at lunchtime. Adrienne is still enthusiastic about special needs and takes the train from work to attend Chef's Club on Thursdays, where she and her longtime friends help prepare a meal and spend an evening together. The program has been, had a profound effect on the lives of so many special young people. I don't remember to thank the hard-working staff at the San Carlos Special Needs and Chef's Club often enough for their years of hard work and commitment to those otherwise isolated and often lonely citizens. Please give consideration to your considered financial support of this vital program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. Next speaker I have is Prakash Narain. I hope I didn't butcher that too badly.
Mayor Grisili and members of the council, thank you very much for giving me an opportunity to talk to you, and I also am here advocating support for the special needs program. I have lived in San Carlos since '96, and I have a young child, young, young boy, he's 16 years old, and he's autistic. One thing we don't realize, having normal children, is that these children, special needs children, really do not have too many opportunities to participate in activities, after-school programs, park and rec, rec programs, and they can sit on the side, but they really cannot participate, they cannot really get any kind of enjoyment out of it. And the interesting thing is that they have their set of emotions, and they're very capable of experiencing happiness... of experiencing happiness as well as joy when they're working together, when they're together with the children of similar needs. So, excuse me. I'm sorry.
All right, take your time. No, finish. Go ahead. Take your time. Take, take your time.
Can I come later?
Sure. Well, we'll skip you and let you come back. Sure, Mr. Narain, no problem. The next speaker I have is Barbara Chan.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Barbara Chan. As we go through this process of reducing the budget, I hope we are mindful of the values that have made San Carlos such an outstanding community. When my daughter attended school in San Mateo, we found that the disabled were poorly treated by the general public. In San Mateo, the special needs educators were patient and kind, but when mainstreamed into the regular after-school program there, my five-year-old developmentally-disabled daughter was harassed by other students and neglected by the staff. And I think in order to avoid a well-deserved lawsuit, the San Mateo School District offered to taxi her beyond school district borders into the after-school program for the developmentally-disabled in San Carlos. It was my first encounter with the city of San Carlos. I was very impressed that San Carlos was so altruistic as to have created a program, a place for the developmentally-disabled children and adults. In 1997, when it came time for me to buy a home, I could think of no better community to join. Here was a community of forward thinkers, people who cared not only about their own interests, but of other people and the greater world around them. And yes, that's a nod to our efforts to become a more sustainable community as well. And indeed, when Alyssa began attending a mainstream or regular classroom at Britton Acres, she was not only tolerated, she was welcomed. We could not walk down Laurel Street without being greeted by at least half a dozen classmates or others that she knew. It was like walking with a mini-celebrity. I hope that San Carlos can retain this attitude towards people who are less abled. The special needs program is more than just a recreational program. It is the center of a whole community of disabled adults. This is where they meet and make new friends. It is a place that caregivers can network and learn from each other. People come from cities all around because there is no other program like it. Losing such a valuable resource would be devastating to a much larger community than just the numbers of people enrolled would imply. I understand the dire need to reduce the budget, especially if the revenue measure this fall fails, but please do not cut this program. Reduce its funding, perhaps. Let us have a chance to find other sources of funding, but don't let us lose this program that is so important to so many. Please do not let the entire special needs program be a line item that is lost in a budget proposal. In my years of working as a healthcare professional with those who are less, who are disabled in various ways, and as a mother of a developmentally-disabled child, turning adult, I have found that when I think of extending myself to be helpful to others, somehow I have also been helped. When I help someone else rise up, I am also raised. Let us be helpful to each other. Let us be creative in how we can maintain those values and fundamental programs in this time of economic diversity. My daughter needs this program. Her friends, Garive, Barbara, Katrina, Nancy, Nolan, Adrienne, Bill, and Kendall need this program. Their families need this program. San Carlos needs this program. Please let us find a way to keep this program. Thank you for your time and kind attention.
Thank you, Ms. Chan. The next speaker slip I have is Alicia Cumming.
Honorable manager and city council, Mr. Exar. Hello, my name... There. Hello, my name, Alyssa Cumming. Please, please do not, not hand away the special needs program. It is very important to me and my friends. I started on there, and I was a little girl, six years old. I am 19 years old this salary. Janet and Net have take, no, take care of me for a long time. And that teach me how to eat healthy and teach is my friends good behavior. She teach us to grow up to be good. 50 years and we exercise, cook, hang out, and have fun. I make new friends there the whole time at special needs program. I can't see my friends. And my boyfriend, Bill, my friends, he and I look forward to the dance every month. We like it there. If stop the special needs program, then I will have no, nowhere to go after school. I want be humble to hang out with my friends. I want be humble to talk my girlfriend. And that, I want be able to cook at Chef's Club. I don't have a place to sing karaoke. If I won't have fun after school, I will miss you not. Please do not take my special needs program away. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Alyssa, very much.
You're welcome.
All right. You have a good evening, okay?
Okay, good bye.
Watch that karaoke, because that gets you in trouble. I'll tell you, I know it can.
It's my beauty. A loki is my kapa. Let him go.
Thank you again for your comment. Next speaker slip I have is Peggy Keller Giacalone. I think I said that right. Must be Italian. Old school.
Hello, Mayor and City Council of San Carlos. I'm the one speaker who didn't prepare a speech, but I luckily, when I left the House this evening, grabbed the recreation and parks schedule for 2004 with my daughter Kendall on the cover. This was obviously, hopefully, in better budget times. But when 1986, when my husband and I moved to San Carlos, our hope was to involve our children in our community where they were attending school. And as Kendall's older sister was lucky enough to go into programs like Outdoor Ed and the Central Middle School, go to Yosemite, and then eventually to Washington, D.C., Kendall, as a child with special needs, didn't get a lot of these opportunities. But through the San Carlos Rec Department, she has had numerous opportunities to have her own kind of fun with friends that accept her and love her. And she's been able to go to day camps to have friends like Alyssa and Adrienne and some other lifelong friends that she's known since she was enrolled in Britton Acres when she was in kindergarten. She's, you know, they've done numerous programs that have helped her self-esteem, her self-worth. She now has a job in the community and is able to cook simple meals due to the Chef's Club program at the recreation program. She's able to go to dances, to spend time with her peers. She also, they do movie nights, they go to Great America every year. It's been an amazing program. While I know that at this point, there's not a lot of San Carlos residents personally involved in the program, special needs. I personally am involved in a Silicon Valley Down syndrome network, that there are numerous families living right now in San Carlos that would greatly benefit from this program. While this far reaches everybody on the peninsula who have children and adults with special needs, I know in San Carlos, there's these budding families that have asked me over and over, what programs are out there? What are out there for our kids when they get older? And I have, for years, explained that this program has just been a godsend to our family, to Kendall, to watch her and help her grow. And I just hope that this will be a program for them, because this budget cut and this elimination would just, there's future generations that are ready to go into this program when they hit the appropriate age. And with it gone, where are these families going to go? There are always going to be Little League programs. There's always going to be high school dances and middle school dances for the kids that have them. But our group of kids, what programs do we have out there? I mean, they're so limiting and limited, and that this program has just been a godsend to many of the families, and we truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I also wanted to let you know that we all, at least I did, received your email today. I hadn't had a chance to respond to you, so perhaps we might be responding tonight to you, and just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming. Mr. Narain, would you like to come back up? Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Narain. All right. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item, 10A?
Certainly. Please just fill out, you don't have to fill a slip out now, but after you speak, if you would, sir. Please identify yourself and you come forward, please. Thank you. And a slip is just for the record so we can post it.
Not a problem. Thank you. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I just want to let you know that I'm a former San Carlos Park and Recreation employee, and I actually was involved with the special needs program. It's a vital program for young men and women and adults. There's very limited programming in the whole valley. To be honest, excuse me, to be honest with you, this does so much more than you can even possibly put into words. You witness just a fraction, and I really strongly ask you to reconsider that line item. It's vital. There aren't any programs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you'd fill us up later on, thanks. And just to be clear, this line item is in our stage-two section, so stage-one, we're not, our current budget that we're going to adopt, it still remains in, is that correct, Mr. Weiss?
That's correct. The stage-two cuts are scheduled for June 30th and would be contingent upon the revenue measure not passing.
Right. So it's not going to be necessarily in this calendar year budget or this fiscal year budget. Just want to make sure everybody understands that, but it certainly could come up. So, Mr. Lewis?
Well, through the chair, just, I mean, just because of some of the compelling public speaking, I just want to say that, you know, for me personally, that was one specific item why I didn't want stage-two to be anything beyond a staff suggestion. I would, I'm never going to vote for the elimination of special needs program, and that was one of the programs that we mentioned in the budget study session. And that's why it would come up later in the year for the council to consider at that time, that program is funded in this budget that we're voting on tonight. I'm sorry, but that was specifically...
Emphasize the point. That's fine.
Why I brought it up at the study session. I just felt compelled to say.
Sure, and that's fine. Like I said, it's in this time, it's on a list. There are many things on that list on stage-two. As Mr. Grokot indicated with his question, and Mr. Lewis just reiterated, we're going to be looking at every single thing again, so there will be another bite of the apple, so to speak, and we're going to, this council will, again, with great labor, literally look at each line item to make sure that, what we have to do to make it right for all the citizens of San Carlos. And I do again thank all the speakers for coming out tonight. Okay. If there's no other speakers, then we need to do some business and I guess some discussion. So, gentlemen, where would you like to go here? Mr. Ahmad, do you have any comments or changes or...
I probably have a few comments, but I saw that Mr. Grokot actually has some fairly extensive notes. I'd actually like to hear from him.
Okay. Let's, Mr. Lewis, anything right now?
You know, I want to talk about the stage-two things, which I've already had an opportunity to speak to tonight. I did want to say that when it, when it comes, and again, I think this is a discussion tonight as well, so I'll reserve some comments depending on how other council members represent things tonight. But, you know, I do want to point out that we can always ask as a council, our employees to, you know, whatever, whether it might be take furloughs or pay cuts or whatever. But when we negotiated the contract six months ago for, I think, five out of six or six out of seven of our labor groups, it was six months ago, the economic downturn was in full swing. I think anybody could look at their portfolio, including the cities, and I think, to my knowledge, it was fully a part of our discussions at that point in time. And so I just want to say that I feel like that was part of our consideration, and I would appreciate the council treating it such, just because I think that it came up in discussion out of respect for, for one another. And the full consideration, I think we gave it as a council. My only other comment, it just comes down to some of the state grabs and so forth, which I also mentioned earlier. We had an opportunity at the study session to sort of vet a lot of our concerns and comments, and I had an opportunity to do that there, so I'll reserve for the comment for other...
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Grokot?
I actually have a few questions for staff, because some things I just wanted to get clarification on. One is, I wanted to know, when we, we have certain positions where we give a window within which the city manager is authorized to make pay to employees, and I wanted to know that when, when that's done, when a window is given, and then, of course, there's a certain cap, is that cap all that's allowed to be paid from all funds, or is it a cap that's allowed to be paid only from the general fund?
I'm not sure if I'm fully following the question, but when we hire employees, we hire them within a certain range. And typically, there are five steps within that range. And irrespective of whether the money comes from the general fund, or whether it comes from the sewer fund, or whether it comes from the redevelopment fund, they're paid within that range. And so if the salary is $70,000 or $80,000, you know, $20,000 might come from one fund, $20,000 from another, but they're paid within the range for the position in which they're, they're hired.
Are there positions that get paid for extra duty, serving on other boards or anything like that?
I, you know, off the top of my head, I can't think of anyone that would serve in that capacity. I know the city clerk, we have an elected city clerk who gets compensated by the meeting. She also serves as the assistant city clerk and has the normal compensation. Perhaps if you could share with me the type of board or...
Well, I don't want to necessarily lay out a specific position, but I did do some comparisons of what these positions are paying, the, these stepped positions, if you will, from the email that I had requested and you sent out with, with these, these various positions. And then I was comparing that to what was reported in the paper, when the paper reported on all the cities, and then reported certainly on us, on what we were paying. And for instance, there was one position that, you know, the top step is about $168,000, but it looked in the paper like that position paid $190,000 plus. So I don't know why the difference.
Just hypothetically, there, there is an opportunity perhaps for people to cash out vacation pay. We don't allow sick leave here, as many cities do, but, but there is a vacation. So if a person has accrued months and months of vacation and, or weeks, I don't know if we have any that have accrued months, but there is an opportunity to cash out leave if they've accrued it over time.
Okay.
We, we have a provision, it's actually in all the, all the labor agreements, where we don't allow employees to keep more than two years of vacation accrual on the books. That's not two total years, but what they would accrue over two years. Anything beyond that, we require employees to be paid out for it. This helps us avoid the situation that we heard a lot about in Vallejo, where they had a number of...
a number of very tenured employees leave all at once, that created a massive multimillion dollar payout that the city, really hit the city financially. So that's one area. Then of course, the pay-for-performance bonuses that were also in place last year would be another area that would be above the, you know, the salary range itself. But that, you know, that would be it, with the exception that there are payouts for some employees who don't take the city's medical benefits, so you get a small cash payout instead of taking the benefit. And then there are, in addition, some employees receive an auto allowance in public safety. There are some specialty pays, those kinds of things, that are in addition to the actual salary range.
Okay. And then the other, the last question I had deals with, in the summary of our budget, so the first part here, it talks about how we've, for nine straight years, we've, you know, faced certain budget reductions, and then it says in the spring of 2008, we cut millions of dollars, and then it gives some examples of cutting administration by 30%, Parks and Rec by 18, Public Works by 19, and then Police by 7. And so I did the best I could by, I still had last year's budget, and I compared it to this, and I combined, you know, your, the pages that you provided on expenditures, and I'm trying to come up with those savings. I remember even being a part of those meetings, okay, where we made some adjustments in that springtime. But, you know, just for example, if I look at, let me put my glasses on. Getting old is hard. Remember when I first got on council? I never, I never wore glasses. So for instance, it, let me go back to that, Public Works, 19%. So if I go back to the budget, and this is, this column's listed, this is from last year's document, but it's, it lists revised budget 2007, 2008, Public Works total 806,000 and some change. And then if I go to 2007, 2008 actual, it's a million 64, about a million and 65,000, which is about a 32% increase. I could go through a number of these that I showed, that I marked, and I began by looking at what was listed in here, where it said we made cuts, and in every case, I just see, the only place I see a reduction that's in, somewhat in line with what's in the statement is Police. I see a 6% reduction. But everything else I see increases.
Well, if, and, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I heard you say you were, you were looking at last year's budget document?
Yes.
Okay. One of the, one of the very significant things going on here is what I mentioned earlier, and we talked a little bit about it at the study session, and that's that we've restated everything in this year's budget. So we've brought costs, for example, I use myself as an example, for going back, I don't know, 15, 20 years or so, the finance director of the city, because it handles all the finances for all the units, was parceled out, and a lot of positions were parceled out into other units. A little bit in sewer, and a little bit in RDA, and a little bit in gas, you know, just a little bit all over the place, and the bulk in the general fund. In this year's budget, we've brought it all into the general fund, which makes the cost look higher. It lowered the cost in the other funds, and then we're offsetting that by a transfer, a greater transfer. So that's one thing that's going to make looking at last year's budget and this year's budget near impossible, which is why we restated the numbers in this year's budget for last year, to show you apples-to-apples comparison. In the future, we believe that this will give you a lot more detailed information, so you could see, okay, the city manager's department costs X number of dollars. You can see it all. You don't have to go to the sewer fund to find a piece of it, and the RDA to find a piece of it. You're going to see it all in the city manager's budget from this budget going forward. But it makes, if you're looking at an old budget document, it makes the numbers look inflated. Then as I said earlier, when we, when we build a budget, we start with the base budget assumptions, and that is, you know, how is, how's the revenue going to change? How are the expenditures going to grow? And then we cut from that number. So we can cut millions of dollars in some years from the budget, and you could actually still see a net gain in the overall city budget, even in a department budget. You know, for example, last year, we cut in administrative services, we cut an IT position. We had four, or we had three systems analysts in IT and an IT manager. Now we only have two, so that was a real reduction. We had a receptionist in the department for the entire city, and, you know, I mean, as we all know, every time you come into the city, that position's no longer there, there's just a computer screen to greet you at City Hall. And we had a financial services manager in the finance department, which was a management, highly-paid compensated management position that we cut. None of those positions were backfilled with part-time or any other full-time employees, they were straight reductions. So the, you know, the reductions that are listed throughout the documents in the past are all real reductions that the cities made that have saved, I think we said at the study session, over the last decade, we've cut more than $10 million from the budget. Those are all, you know, your budget would be that much higher today if you had, if you maintained all of those positions, programs, and services than the budget that you're otherwise adopting.
So this statement that's on page seven, again, where, again, it starts off with for nine, for nine straight years, et cetera. These percentages, there's no way to really take those percentages and compare them either to last year's budget or to the restated that you put in here.
No, you would, you would need all the backup documentation that we maintain in finance as part of putting the structure of the budget together, because there's just not enough detail in the budget books for you to reconstitute that. You can certainly see the positions and the headcount changes, that's easy to determine in the budget. But going beyond that, you'd really have to have all the backup material for each year of the budget cuts.
Certainly, well, I suppose even the subtotals wouldn't be a guide. The only thing that's a guide is the very total at the bottom.
I mean, what we'd have to do is, we'd have to go back and present for you the cuts that were made in each year. I mean, we can show you clearly that we've gone from 125 to 111 positions. And we know that we've reorganized significantly in community development and in administration. We've eliminated several positions, we've taken several department head positions, converted them to manager positions. But we'd have to go back to each annual presentation to you and present to you the cuts that were made in each of the previous years.
And when you talk about positions, it looks to me like, you know, if we were to try and get at least closer to our general fund expenditures to our revenues of about 23 million, we'd have to go back to something like the actual restated 2007, 2008. And we'd only be about a million dollars away, and that would be about where we, you know, could deal with it on transfers in, transfers out, that kind of thing that we normally do.
Yeah, that would be a way to look at it.
How many employees did we have in 2007, 2008?
I think we had 113 employees, if I'm not mistaken. 113.3 is what's coming to mind.
All right. Okay. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss?
Let me just, first of all, thank you, Jeff, and staff. All the information, excellent here. I would like to summarize a little bit about the key points of what we've been dealing with for five years plus. I mean, your chart showing that expenses are growing with a slope like this, a steeper slope than the revenue slope has been going on for some time. Revenues are minus 2%, our expenses are plus 2%, going opposite ways. And you talked about property and sales tax down 6% and 9%, and less services and so forth. And all that stuff we knew a month ago during the session that we had on the budget. I would like to highlight though, to my peers, even though I totally agree with Mr. Lewis's comment, we knew what was happening three to six months ago. The economy was in a tailspin. But some of the things that are now, you know, pending are becoming more evident that they're going to happen. Although I hope the governor's not listening to me now, but, you know, $800 to $1 million of them holding our property taxes and not paying us, and whether or not they'll ever be able to pay us, is a big deal. That's a big figure. We have three-fourths of our gas tax for paving of our roads. We have some additional legal costs, that, a couple of things that are coming on board that we may be spending some money on. Additional requirements, I know Mark's talked about the Regional Quality Control Board, the Water Board, and Climate Control, we need to spend money on. And the last item was, although there's some variation, but on the fire board, there was a discussion a month ago about workman's compensation, about $800,000 in extra fees. With an next meeting, it was softened to say, well, we're not sure. We know it's going to cost more, but we need to go back and figure that out. So, you know, I just take that to know, it's going to cost more, and that number's not in here. So everything I've just spoke about in the last two minutes are, you know, it's starting to hit my ribs here a little bit. I feel it a little tighter. And where I'm going with this is, basically, I'm comfortable with the budget. There's maybe three areas that I would like to look at and maybe have council think about. One is our execution of our review of what we call these Y2 cuts. These are the cuts that aren't going to happen until June of 2010, next fiscal year, a whole year away. We may want to consider looking at those and doing a mid-year review. Not only at those items, but there may be a few other items. You know, we saw some passion for special needs, I have some passion for healthy cities, we all have our favorites and so forth. But doing, with the revenue issue, the potential revenue issue, if that doesn't pass, I almost feel not waiting six months. I think we need to be ready to go with our next level of cuts. And I could approve the budget, but between now and then, five or six months ago, work out a list. We've cut a half a million dollars basically of operating expense and a half million of reserves. This Y2 list is about 750 or something, I think, and it may be 500, it may be a million dollars. But we need to be ready to make some further cuts. And the main thing on those Y2 cuts is that's the first time that we're actually drawing blood, we're actually letting people go. These other cuts don't impact our headcounts much. We've been coming down with benefits costs and employees' costs and saving money, but that'll be the day of reckoning that city council makes decisions on laying off people. So again, my first consideration or two for consideration of the council is to consider a mid-year review, rather than wait until June of '10. Second of, second item is, and I talked briefly to Mark about this, we've done a really good job in reducing benefits costs and retirement and so forth. We brought rates down. However, we are still committed to the contracts that we have with our existing people. And I really do support Mark's work on what he's done to preserve his organization, not lay off people, to be aggressive. We've already taken furloughs, we've reduced some salaries, we've reduced benefits and medicals and all those sorts of things. And we could, as council, say, well, take a 5% cut. Let's take another two weeks off in summer, let's do more and more. And I really think we would damage the integrity of our organization. But one of the things that I've seen that's done in the corporate world is to have what I would call an early retirement bonus. And those are people, we, now, you know, there are people out there that are going to be retiring at 55 or 60, and what we say is, it's kind of a two-way street. We gain, they gain. We say, hey, we need some help. We have people, we're giving those people the choice to do some early retirement, rather than get that 2.5% per year, rather than get 80% of your pay over four years at 2.5%. You're going to get 70% of your pay for the rest of your life. But you're going to get a payout upfront. And it's cost us money, but it provides us long-term financial health by basically bringing down the cost level of the organization, but most importantly, doing it in a fair way. These are people that have created, San Carlos is the city it is, they've worked here 10, 20, 30 years. We're giving them a choice, we're trying to be fair, take care of them, but we're also from a financial bottom-line point of view, making out by trying to reduce our overall FTE costs, our people costs. So my second recommendation would be, again, nothing to do with the budget here, but to ask Mark and his staff to go back and look at that, and see if there are opportunities over the next year to offer some sort of enhanced early retirement bonus for our people. Two more items, and the next item is overtime. And I've asked for overtime stuff last year when I came on board. I've learned a little bit more, but I don't know enough yet to make a recommendation. But I have learned, you know, that we in our police department, we will spend almost a half a million dollars in overtime this year. And we probably need to. We need to have coverage out on that street and that third car. The fire department, we will spend, or we're budgeting to spend $1.6 million in overtime. Now, when I say overtime, I should use the word premium pay, because there's overtime, there's scheduled overtime, unscheduled overtime, there's holiday pay. I call that, when you have a safety organization where you're supporting it seven days a week, 24 hours a day, when you're paying time and a half or two times, it is really expensive. And we may need to be spending that money, but I, as a council member, and whether or not you guys agree with me or not, I'm going to ask for more data on overtime. We're spending $1,606,000 in Fire, and we're a little more than half of that that we pay for, and that's 6.3 million. And we're going to spend about $480,000 in the Police this year. Normal run rate's about half, and we know why we're spending more. But I'd like to, because it's a big number, you're talking about salaries of $3 million in, $2.5 million in Police. A half a million is overtime, 20%. In Fire, it's 33%. That just appears a little hot to me. And not that we need to cut it, I just want to understand it. Because it's a big number, and it's in that money that we, prevents us from funding a lot of these programs, and even some of the programs that you've come to talk about this evening. And my last point is, there's some reference been made to a grand jury report, and attorney, if you could please, if I misstate anything, but my understanding is, this was actually a hardcover letter dated June 4th. I just received it today at noon in my mailbox, hard copy. And basically, the Superior Court of San Mateo is addressing a major concern, and the title is basically, tells you what the concern is. They're wanting to look at reversing the upward trajectory of employee costs in the cities of San Mateo County. You know, we all read the papers, we see what's going on with the state of California, and I really look forward to working with the county and with the mayor on this response. Just to quote a couple lines in here, employee wages and compensation patches, and, I'm sorry, compensation packages are not affordable. Union contracts for new employees can be introduced, reducing costs for cities for both pension and post-retirement. Looking at contracting out services to other cities or other private sector firms. And they talk about having public sessions and a task force and so forth. This is- This is, this is stuff I was thinking about when I came on council. We didn't need to manage affordability, and now we have a requirement, I believe, to respond to the Superior Court on how we, but not we, every city in San Mateo County, and I'm sure other counties are going to be doing the same thing, on how we manage affordability. So, I look forward to working on this. Again, it doesn't affect the budget. So, in conclusion, what I would like to ask the rest of my council members on is basically the support of doing a mid-year review. And I think, was that it? And, sorry?
Looking at overtime.
No, overtime is support that I've asked for, but you could charm in, and on the bonus, the early retirement bonus, whether or not, well, I'd like your opinion on early retirement and overtime and grand jury, if you think those are things we should be working on this next year.
Okay.
But the only real requirement, formal requirement, is propose a mid-year review.
Okay. Mr. Weiss, I think we were going to do a mid-year review anyway, is that right?
That is part of our normal process, yes. And I understand that this particular year that you'd like to take a real close look at the cuts that are scheduled pursuant to this budget as part of that process. And I should mention that we will work up a response to the grand jury report. I'm happy to say that in this response, we're going to be able to show that the vast majority of the things that they're recommending be done in cities throughout San Mateo County, we've already done. I mean, in some ways, they could point to this, you know, do what the city of San Carlos has done, and that would simplify the report because we've actually implemented many of the recommendations already that are included in that grand jury report. And so, I think this is going to be a fun report for all of us to work on.
Yeah. By the way, Mark, thank you on that, I failed to mention, we have done a great job, but there's still other stuff there, too. But we have done an exceptional job with a lot of their issues.
Okay. So, we have something before us here, a budget. You have other comments? Mr. Ahmad, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'll keep my comments brief. First, I do want to, Mr. Mayor, acknowledge Mark Weiss and his staff and Jeff Malphey and his staff. They, in working with them over the last year, last year I was fairly frustrated with the budget process and squawked pretty hard, and the amount of work and care that the staff puts into this document is noteworthy, and I truly appreciate the amount of work that they've done. I don't, I don't want to just stand on principle and say, I don't want to support something. I really want to try to find a way to come around and support these documents. I can't. I am not satisfied with the budget. I am not satisfied with what it tells the folks of San Carlos and what direction it's going to go. There's a point in here where we're keeping fingers crossed and doing whatever else we can and hoping for a rebound in the economy. We had a moment where we spoke about property taxes and where that's going. For those of you who have been following it, the interest rates went up a little bit, and mortgage applications dropped by a third the week after Memorial Day. The real estate market's in a freefall. We may be a little bit more solid, but if interest rates keep going up, we're stuck. I know that we are very likely to put some sort of revenue measure on the ballot. I'll go door-to-door trying to push this thing, but there was an interesting number that came out. A revenue measure is going to be roughly 2.2 million dollars. Our structural deficit is 2.7. Guess what? We're still in a hole. This budget doesn't get us out of the hole. And while we've got extremely compelling stories for every program that we ought to save, I haven't heard too many people sit here pounding their fists saying, what's happening to our reserves? The Capital Reserve, you know, effective 2010, is effectively broke. We've got nothing. You know, what's happening with all of the other reserves? What's happening to our Gatsby? What's happening to our other obligations that we are supposed to do? We're kind of sloughing that off, to the extent, Mr. Mayor, that what I'm looking at here is, you know, I pick up the local rags, too, and they're happy to blazon the headline, hey, nine years of cuts, welcome to number 10. You know, I think, you know, we're looking at this and saying, I believe that the councils have had tough decisions before, and we've now come to a point where we need a wholesale change in policy and what's supposed to happen. Vice Mayor Royce talked about offering early retirement. I think that needs to be put onto the table. Mr. Weiss is a good man and a good manager, and I think wants to do everything he can to avoid layoffs. I can't blame him. As a CEO of an organization, that's what you want to do, so I'm going to say the dirty word. I think we've come to the point where this is what we've got to do. Layoffs suck. They are absolutely awful, but at this point, we do not have the money to support the programs that we want to keep in place. So, the long story short, Mr. Mayor, I don't have a target on any particular program saying, we got to kill this one, or I'm going to go nuts. But I said this during the study session, saying it again, I don't think I've been inconsistent in this position. The cuts that are Y-one, I really don't care what they are, but we've got to make them. The Y-two cuts are not enough to move us out of the hole. Furthermore, Mr. Mayor, and this is sort of the point that really gets me, we are using what we officially refer to as economic uncertainty funds to balance this budget. We could have looked at this budget last year after we didn't put a revenue measure on, and we knew exactly what the economics are going to be. There's nothing uncertain about where we are. The economic uncertainty reserves are a few weeks of runway in terms of our budget. We are free of natural disasters at this point. Our infrastructure mostly works. But come the winter, are we going to have some flooding? Is a natural disaster in place? What other economic calamities could occur? I don't feel it is responsible for us to draw those funds down to cover what I believe should be made up in cuts or other mechanisms. For me to be able to support this budget and move forward, Mr. Mayor, is a lot more work. What I will offer to the council, and I think it's appropriate, we've had a lot of years of cuts. We have come together one evening a year to do a budget review session and do a study session and say, what do we think? I think this is going to require a lot more thinking and a lot more hard work. Mr. Mayor, if you want to call a special meeting every day between now and July 1st, I'll find a way to take a leave of absence from my work and be there because this is important. We have to do it. One evening doesn't cut it, and right now, this budget is not something I can support. And I'll yield at that point.
Thank you. I don't have too many comments. Again, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I asked a bunch of questions, but I didn't make any comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please.
I don't know if Mr. Lewis, I guess you made your comments.
All right, go ahead. Didn't mean to skip your comments.
Thank you. I first wanted to address a couple of things that were said by my fellow council members. Mr. Lewis talked about, you know, we knew six months ago, and I would agree with you that we knew we're in some interesting financial times six months ago. I don't know that we knew quite the gravity of it, but be that as it may, I have a feeling that the process is somewhat backwards because we looked at all these contracts, six or seven of them, and they were all, it was all presented to us in a piecemeal fashion. We didn't have the big picture like we do when we get this binder. And we agree to those contracts, and then suddenly, we get this binder, and it shows us how that all is supposed to work. Instead of, when we're looking at contracts, or perhaps before we go into contracts, giving us something of a budget like this and saying, you're going to go into negotiations, this is what things are looking like, this is your budget for '09-'10, if you approve these contracts, or if you don't. You know, as you move the number, this is how it affects this booklet. We didn't have that. So, to me, it's, again, it's a little backwards, it's a bit piecemeal. I think as far as a revenue measure, I would agree with Mr. Ahmad, whether we passed one, whether we passed a revenue measure last year or we pass one in the future, we're still going to be in a hole. And I drew myself a quick picture of that one graph about the, what was it called? The deficit graph showing things going steeply downward. Well, even if we do pass a tax measure, we'll still need to come back for more. And the message, I think, to the residents, if you're to believe these graphs and everything, and also, there was another chart up there, 2011 and beyond. What that's all saying to us is the residents will have to work harder and more hours to support their city government. That's the message I'm getting. We're just going to keep asking folks to pay more in taxes, and whether it's property taxes or fees or whatever, to make this thing work. Now, in the budget here in the foreword, it says, for nine straight years, we've done thus and so in terms of cutting millions here and cutting services and so forth. Well, for nine straight years, there's some other things that have happened, too. We've accepted, as a city, increased development. Some people are all for increased development, other people are not. We've accepted things like PAMF, the San Carlos Marketplace, 1001 El Camino, just to name a few. And a lot of times, those things were presented to us saying, we need to go ahead with some of this because it's going to be revenue to the city. So, we had that, revenue increases to the city through development. We've raised fees for services, again, to try and recoup some of the cost of providing services. And then, up until this year, apparently, what's budgeted anyways, we've seen increases in revenues because of property tax going up, because of sales and turnover of homes. And all during that time, we've accepted decreases in services to the tune of millions of dollars to save the city money. All these things, whether it's increased fees, increased property taxes, or reduction in services, to me, those are all takeaways. Takeaways from the residents of San Carlos, the people who pay the bill in one fashion or another. Now, granted, we've done some things recently in terms of benefits and so forth with our salary and benefit packages, but we haven't made millions of dollars in takeaways to the people who we pay. And that's what I've been arguing for. We're talking about moving forward, going into negotiations with the taxpayer, if you will, to pay more. And I think, with all due respect, we should be going into negotiations with our employees and saying, look, we didn't realize where we were going to be, where we were going to go, we're in trouble, and we need your help, and we need to go back and talk to those employees and ask for something. Because over nine years, we haven't done that. We've given more and more and more every year to the employees. So, that's kind of where I am. I want to close with a comment. I saw an article in the paper about Stanford, and the provost of Stanford, and he said, we don't need to get back to where we were in 2008 in terms of revenues because they had higher revenues then. He said, what we have to accept is, we have a new revenue baseline, and we have to move to that new baseline. And I think that's what we need to do. And I think we need to begin it, moving back with, like I say, going back to our union groups, our management employees, et cetera, and saying, look, guys, we need some give-back, more than we've had.
Comments that I have, again, staff, thank you for all the work you've done. I think we have a couple of ideas that have been floated here relative to this budget. I would certainly, in a couple of moments, entertain motions to approve, disapprove, open up contracts, do whatever you'd like. It takes three votes. If there's three votes here, we'll do it. If not, we'll move on. I do have to say that, you know, city government provides city services. It would be great if we didn't have to pay overtime to police and fire, but they're also available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It's an unusual job. It doesn't go into the nine-to-five category. I know where I worked. If you worked overtime, if you were an exempt employee, it was part of your salary. Hourly people got paid extra. That's the way it was. We control that because we're a private business. We didn't have to provide 24/7 service. I keep hearing about this overtime, 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 and I have no problem looking at it. I think it's great that we identify it, but I think it'll be proven out, for the most part, is that people get sick, people take vacations. That means somebody has to take their spot. If, in my job, if there wasn't anybody, if I got sick, nobody took my job for three days. I had a stack of paper when I came back, but nobody took my job for three days. If a fire personnel isn't there, you got to backfill that. Police officer isn't there, you got to backfill that. So, I think some of this is a little bit spurious on some of these comments on overtime, my opinion. And again, getting back to city government provides city services. We're paying folks to, again, provide the public safety, the park and rec, the public works, clean our streets, a myriad of services, keep our books so that we can go out and charge people for some of these fees and licenses that we do have, and every city does. And I look at this and go, well, somebody's got to get paid to do it. Now, are the salaries too, you can certainly make the case that we're paying too much money. You could make that case. Then, we could be the first to cut salaries 20% in the county. We've already, as Mr. Weiss said, in relative to the grand jury report, we're way ahead of the curve on this. Now, maybe we should be farther ahead of the curve, but we're certainly way ahead of the curve on some of this. I think we have a budget document here, speaking to Mr. Ahmad's comments. There's no question that we are going to have to face, even if we have a revenue measure that passes, we're going to have some dark days ahead. But to go ahead and wholesale cut, at least my opinion was, and then all of a sudden have money backfill in, and granted, we are in a tough economic time, if we assume that this economic time will never get better, I think you're right on track. I don't happen to think that's going to happen for 20 years, but maybe it will. But it might be for a period of year or two. But then to go back and backfill after we've eliminated it and come back is going to cost us half again as much money to reinstitute some of these services that we gave away. So, anyway, bottom line is, I'm willing to entertain any motions that the council would like to propose, and we certainly can discuss them relative to the approval or non-approval of the budget or other items on here. So, I'm wide open, whatever you gentlemen would like to do. But please do something. Yes, sir.
I would begin by, when we talk about, you're right, we have to pay for what we get. But to look at where we are today of just on our general fund.
Well, Mr. Grokot, we talked about, I mean, those items, okay? No question, I understand where you're coming from. You feel that perhaps we shouldn't be paying as much for these costs. I get it, okay? I get it. So, I apologize, but I get it. I'm looking for motions to try to move forward and do some action here. I think we've heard the comments from all the people on the dais, and we certainly understand each one, at least I do, understand each of our stands. So, I would appreciate if we could speak to the issue at hand and make a motion or not make a motion or do something in action as opposed to further comments. And if each action is made, we certainly could have comments on that.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2009-10 operating capital budget for the city of San Carlos and the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency, as presented with the amendments tonight for the Arts and Culture Edition, and I'm sorry, the-
Healthy Cities.
The Healthy Cities Adjustment.
Now, second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. There's a motion on the floor, discussion on that motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to amend.
Okay. Or perhaps a substitute motion, but go ahead, sure.
I'll move to amend. Approval of said budget with additional cuts such that economic uncertainty reserves are not used.
Mr. City, well, I guess you-
So, if I may clarify, in other words, you would substitute the Y-two cuts up to the same value, 495,000, of the economic uncertainties reserve?
I'll put no restrictions on that, whatever cuts would have to be made, but no economic uncertainty funds could be used in this budget.
Well, having said that, of course, we will have to, we would have to identify those this evening or at another meeting before the end of the year.
I agree.
Okay. There's a motion or an amendment there to the, I'm going to make me Robert Schultze order. Does the person in the original motion want it amended or- Does the person, the original motion, want it amended, or accept the amendment?
I wouldn't want to.
Okay. So you want to make a motion in that case, then?
You made a motion.
I thought I did, so...
Oh, I apologize, I thought you wanted to amend it, and that's different than making a separate, a substitute motion, that's what I was trying to get at, Mr. Ahmad.
No, sir. My understanding, I'm looking at the city attorney, I was making an amendment to Mr. Lewis's motion...
He's not accepting it.
That's correct.
But he doesn't have to accept it, I thought it had to be...
On an amendment to his motion...
Has to be accepted.
Yeah, has to be accepted.
Understood.
I'd like to second that, see where it goes.
So I would have to restate this as a motion. Slow down, guys, you're getting me here.
Substitute motion.
It's a substitute, it has to be then a substitute motion. The amendment doesn't want to change it, he doesn't have to, now it has to be a substitute motion.
That's correct.
I make the motion to accept this budget with the amendments for the Arts Council, and what was the second part?
Healthy Cities.
And the Healthy Cities, but with additional cuts such that economic uncertainty reserves are not used.
Okay, so a secondary motion, and you've seconded Mr. Morse, okay? So...
So discussion on that, so what you're proposing is that, in some time in the next X amount of weeks, we'll find a half million dollars in cuts? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
What's our, what's our deadline on having to approve this?
Well, I mean, ideally, we would adopt a budget before the end of the fiscal year. If we're not able to do that, we could adopt a resolution of continuing operations, and operate under the existing budget for as long as it takes us to resolve the matter.
Just like the state.
Just like the state. We would prefer not to get into that mode.
Not sure we've ever done that in this city, but...
I've seen it, I've seen it done for two or three months, but rarely.
Okay, we got it, okay. So it's on the floor, go, Mr. Lewis.
Well, no, I was just going to say, just in counterpoint to what you said before, I would argue that these are absolutely economic uncertain times, and this is exactly what this reserve was met to help us with. If we had had a unanimous vote last fall, we would have had a tax measure in front of the voters, at which time, we could have gotten clear direction on these cuts. Because we didn't, we have to wait. The economy has gotten bad in the last 12 months, but if you recall the State of the City speech a year ago, last March, we knew all of these things were coming forward to us. It's completely erroneous, and misconstrues the information that this council considers and gets, to say that we didn't understand when we got into these contracts, when we decided, when the body decided not to do the tax revenue measure last year. It's completely erroneous to say, "Oh, I had no idea what was going up on here, till I got this binder." That's just, it's utterly ridiculous. We review this mid-year, every year, we have projections, the GAZB, all of this knowledge has been in front of us. And, you know, this council has been unanimous in their approval of every one of these contracts for the last eight years. So, the economic uncertain times are absolutely upon us. And, I mean, who wouldn't look at Lehman Brothers, or any one of these major events that have happened the last 12 months, and not said that these are economically uncertain times? For me, I just, I cannot fathom that point of view. And I think it is absolutely the design of the council, the design of staff, it's the design of way the city government is, to use these things, and to give the citizens a voice, and a very clear voice, which we could have given them last year, but we decided not to, this year, to say, "Okay, we'll cut more services, we'll do layoffs, we will go to that next step." But I personally don't feel that's what the citizens want. And I feel like part of the culture that San Carlos has is because of a very involved government, a very involved city staff, and very involved volunteers. And I just want to say that, I think that a half million dollars, that we basically agreed to spend in some way, shape, or form, whether in cuts or economic uncertainties, we made this deal when we turned down the tax revenue measure last fall. We all knew this was coming. And I think this is exactly the time that we need to buy it. We've always said that a tax measure is never going to be the be-all and end-all. The tax measure is, is something to, in order to keep our services up in economically tough times, we have to do economic development, we have to do better at everything. This is not, is not the final answer, but in my mind, it's economically uncertain times, we use the money, we identify the cuts, so in December, we know what we're doing, and we're ready to fly. And I agree with a lot of the other comments tonight, early retirement, absolutely.
Go ahead, Ms. Royce.
Yeah, so, let me just give a little bit of the background of my thinking on seconding that motion, Mr. Ahmad. Maybe I could ask a question, Mark or Brian may know best. When I went through the list of three or four new items that happened over the last month, the big item is the governor withholding 800 to $1 million. When would we, when will we know that? Because this, that million, that 900,000 reduction of revenue is not in here. So we're talking about, we're talking about a half a million by Thursday of this week. We may be a million behind, so...
Just a couple of things. One, we don't know when that decision could come forward, either from the governor's recommendation, or from the...
We've got a phone, can we call him?
But secondarily, you know, it's not a given that you'd have to pay that half million dollars in one lump, I mean, it gets paid in one lump sum, but you may be able to bond for it, you may be able to finance that. I mean, it is a loan theoretically, that you are providing the state, and so there is an opportunity for us to pay that off over time.
So is there certainty in getting paid back?
No. You know, pursuant to the law, that it's a constitutional requirement, whether or not there's...
But is there cash flow? Maybe not.
I'm not going to provide guarantees on much of anything at this point, on behalf of the state. But, I mean, I think that, you know, we're operating with the best information that we have available to us. We hope that the state will honor the Constitution, and the guidelines that it provided directly to it, from the electorate. And, and I guess, you know, we certainly forwarded the thought that we would use the economic uncertainties fund, in recognition of the fact that we are projecting a sales tax decline. We do expect the property taxes stabilize because of the economic collapse of October of last year. I can think of no better time. I mean, that is the exact kind of incident that I think that fund was set aside for. And so, we, you know, at the staff level, we would fully recommend that we use those monies to cover that half million dollar differential. And you can make the argument that that's the differential between the 2.2 million from the revenue measure, and the 2.7 million dollar deficit that we currently have. That would, by the way, allow us to put, you know, those numbers staying stable, the million dollars back into the infrastructure fund, and get us back to a point that we are actually putting some monies aside for the future, in terms of our infrastructure and planning forward. I mean, I think it's a viable plan. Certainly, we, you know, we regret the fact that we're having to propose that we use reserves this year. But as Councilmember Lewis said, you know, we knew this was the situation a year ago, that not having the answer a year ago, that we would be in a position this year where we would have to make the decision as to whether to make the cuts, and run the risk of the community saying, "But we want those programs, and we're willing to pay for them." And then you've lost the employees, you've lost the programs, you have to pay the cost of finding new employees, and the cost of reestablishing those programs. And, I mean, it would take time, it would take effort, and it would cost more money. It just didn't seem prudent to us, given, especially given the fact that the community, through the surveying document, gave us very clear indications that they wanted these programs sustained, and wanted to be able to vote on it, and wanted to support it by way of approving a revenue measure. Given that information, and granted, it was a year ago, we're going to be updating that information, and should have new information on that particular point by the end of the month. But given that data, given the community indications, we thought it was a prudent recommendation to you, that we would use reserves to get by the next six months. Now, specific to the point of implementing the programs more quickly, we contemplated and considered, actually, having those reserves cover just a half of a year's budget, and implementing the Y2 cuts in January, as opposed to waiting until June. The decision was made, frankly, that, in terms of making the recommendation, that we would give the council an opportunity to do a mid-year budget review, to reconsider where we were, at the point that we knew the election results, and to give us the time to implement, to give, you know, frankly, to give the employees a chance, the affected employees, to make provisions for new employment and the like, but also to give us a chance to transition, rather than trying to do it two weeks over the holidays. I mean, I think all of those are important points. And then finally, just one last consideration. I mean, I know that we're talking about the difficulty of making those actual Y2 cuts and a half million dollars contained there, but if the revenue measure doesn't pass, I would expect that next year, you're going to be looking at that half million dollars, plus an extra million dollars. I mean, instead of four or five positions, I think you're looking at 12 or 13 positions. I think you're looking at a payroll then of 95 employees. I think you'll be looking shortly thereafter of closing your community center, closing your youth center, and providing nothing more than public safety services. I mean, those public safety services are going up every year, 9% for fire last year. And you're going to find, when you look at the fire budget coming forward, that they're deferring expenses. They're trying to do the same thing the city's doing with this budget, of saying, "Well, we're not going to pay for equipment replacement this year, we're not going to do some of the things that we should be doing, that we know we should be doing, until we answer this question." The fire department is doing the exact same thing by saying, "We're going to defer." Otherwise, they're having 5% or 6% employee costs, because of the contracts, increases because of the contracts that we've seen, but their overall increase is less than that. How are they doing that? They're doing that by not paying for certain things this year, they're putting it off until next year. The problem will only be bigger next year. We want to get through November, give the community a chance to chime in on this issue, and then we need to be prepared to make the hard decisions, and change the very nature of the kinds of services that we provide in this community. It will be nothing more than police and fire in very short order, in my estimation.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just, I want to acknowledge Mr. Lewis's point, there are legitimate other ways to look at this. And just to clarify my thinking, I do not view, by virtue of the fact that we've had this data, and by virtue of the fact that we've had the State of the City addresses in these points, to me, it wasn't an uncertainty that we're going to be where we are. And so, to that point, I'm looking at this money going, "Wait a minute, this is one of the few unrestricted reserves that we've got." We had spoken, I had a brief conversation with Mr. Malpe about, "Well, what happens in case of a disaster or something else?" Well, that's why we have insurance, great. I can assume that in that type of situation, I don't know that an insurance company is going to be rushing out the door to make certain that we have the cash that we need. So to those points, this is a pool of money that I think we've got to hold, and say, "Wait a minute, we've really got to have a real reason to do this." The state takeaway, we didn't foresee them coming in and ripping our money out, I can see doing that. I also know that we've got, I've got personally calls into A-BAG, there is talk about trying to bond the debt that the state will owe us, and collateralize it, so hopefully, we won't get that. I think those are all things we need to do. Again, we're, there are no fund decisions here, but I will also, there is, the mayor made a point of saying, "We may cut these programs, then we'll have to go back and backfill." And this is a point of priority that I will put out, that if I have to choose between the solvency of the city, or preserving a program, I'm going to choose the solvency of the city. So when I'm looking at some of these programs that may come under the knife, the issue from my standpoint is, I've got to make certain that the city, for the next 10 years, is solvent. Now, I'm pulling 10 years out of the air, but if we're going to see our city getting slowly more and more insolvent, that's not a budget that I can support. So, I yield.
Mr. Grocott, do you have any comments directly on this issue, specifically on this amendment, or the second one?
Well, I certainly think that when you have, you know, a reserve fund is there for all kinds of things, and certainly, it's there for economic uncertainties, which is where we seem to be. I would like to make a comment to what's been said about, "Well, we knew this was coming," and so forth. It's odd to me that we knew it was coming, yet we went ahead and made agreements with our employees to pay more. That makes us look, in my mind, irresponsible, because that's what we did. We said, "Sure, you can have 2%, 3%, 4%, 5%, 6%, 7% more, even though we don't have the money to pay." And, look, folks, this, to me, this has nothing to do with, are these, are these people who work for us, do they work hard, are they valuable, are, you know, should we pay them X amount of dollars? It's not the question. The question is, can we afford it? And the city manager said that, you know, "Let's give the citizens the opportunity to chime in and vote, we should have done that last year." I'll put a motion on the table right now. My motion is, during this time that we are going to do these other things, let's go back and ask the union groups and our management group if they will not sit down with us and renegotiate their salaries, and, not even their benefits so much, it's not their benefits, it's their salaries. There's a reason that our number went in '07, '08, from 25.5 to this year's proposed budget of 28.7. Even though we made 30% cuts over here, and 19% cuts over here, and 7% cuts over there, thank you very much, we're still 3 million more expected to pay this year. So my motion is, let's direct city staff to bring back these labor groups and the management, and sit down with us and open up negotiations.
Well, let me just, can that motion be made, Mr.?
The issue that I see is, it's something that's certainly within your jurisdiction as a council, to give direction to staff, but it's not really on tonight's agenda. We have a, a budget is on tonight's agenda, and I realize that's a component of the budget, but really, I think that our, the item in your agenda doesn't really, wouldn't lead a reasonable person to believe that you're going to contemplate that action tonight. It could be put on the next agenda for further discussion, direction to staff through the mayor, or from a council member, but tonight, that particular motion, I think, is really not in our, the item 10 of the agenda. That's what I'm looking at here, it's not there.
Okay, all right. Well, I, you know, on the, you know, the comments that we've made back and forth, we hopefully will have a revenue measure on, we are going to have a mid-year budget, the citizens will speak, if we have that revenue measure on the ballot, the citizens will speak to us, and tell us what they want. We are going to come back and look at a mid-year review. If we get the $800,000 taking from the state, or 800 to $1 million, we are going to have to come back here anyway and do this. I just, I, again, reiterate the fact that I believe that what we're doing is appropriate, because if there is ever a time to use reserves, this would be the time. This, as someone said earlier, this is the first time in 70 years, 75 years, that we've had something like this happen. When would you like to use the reserves? I mean, it's always great to say, "We've got money in the bank, and we never have to spend it." Any of us personally, it's great. But once in a while, you go, "I need that set of tires, so I got to pay that insurance." And that's where I'm coming from, especially when we're going to come back, it's not like now it's done, and we don't have to come back for a year or two. We'll be back here in less than six months, talking about this. I guarantee you, we'll be talking about it. And I think this is the way that we should, we should bridge, it's a bridge, that's how I look at this reserve. It's a bridge to November, and after the election in November, we'll know, one way or the other, assuming we have this on the ballot. If we don't have it on the ballot, we'll even know sooner, because there's no way. As Mr. Weiss said, if we can get that item and raise 2.2 million dollars, $1 million or 1.1, as he mentioned, can go back in, that, part of that structural deficit is that 1.1 million dollars we're taking from Fund 25. And that's the way I've always thought of it, half that money's going right in the bucket. So in 10 years, we'd have $10 million. What a concept, you know? And then, you know, then we've got some flex, even more flexibility than we have now. So, I can't support the substitute motion that you've put forward, I apologize, you know, not apologize, but respectfully disagree, that I just really believe it's in the wrong area. So I'd like to call the question on Mr. Ahmad's motion, and seconded by Mr. Royce. Would you restate it again, please, for the record, just so we have it online?
The motion was to approve the budget document, amending for the Arts Commission Healthy Cities, and to propose additional cuts as quickly as possible, such that economic uncertainty reserves are not used.
Okay, and that was seconded by Mr. Royce. Okay, any last comments? Okay, Ms. Boland, would you please call the role on that?
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Lewis?
No.
Councilmember Royce?
No.
Mayor Grisilli?
No, okay. So it reverts back to the motion that Mr. Lewis had, and Mr. Roy seconded to approve the budget with, again, with the changes and adjustments, and with taking money out taking money out of the Economic Uncertainty Fund. Any further comments on that motion? Okay, hearing none, Ms. Bowlen, excuse me, would you call the roll on that?
Councilmember Ahmad?
No.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Yes.
All right. So we have gone past 10A, and now we move to 10AI, or 10A1, I guess in Roman numeral world, or whatever, to adopt a resolution electing the population inflation adjustment factors, establishing 2009-10 appropriation limit of the City of San Carlos pursuant to California Constitution Article 13B and Section 7900, I don't even know how to say that, it's secretor, of the California Government Code.
Well, good evening, again, Mr. Mayor.
Which is pretty much a standard, just to start off, this is a standard thing we do every year. This is somewhat perfunctory, but go ahead.
That's correct. Every year after we adopt the budget, comes this appropriations limit report. Currently, based on the budget that you just adopted, we're at 40% of our maximum limit of appropriations, so we're well beyond our appropriations limit. So that's not an issue. It really has nothing to do with the expenditures or the revenues, or whether you supported a budget or you didn't support a budget just now, how you go about setting the appropriations limit. There's a short staff report attached. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Questions for Mr. Malpe? Okay, if not, I'd like to call the question, if someone would make a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of Resolution Number 2009 dash?
Forty-one.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, electing the population and inflation adjustment factors, and establishing 2009-2010 appropriations limit of the City of San Carlos pursuant to California Constitution Article 18B and Section 7900, 13?
13.
Sorry, I thought it was another V. 13B and Section 7900 of the California Government Code.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Ms. Bowlen, roll call, please.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on, Item 10B, consideration of ratifying the proposed appropriations budget for fiscal year 2009-2010 for the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department. Chief Doug Frye, thank you for waiting around. Chief Frye?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. As you're aware, part of the second restated agreement with the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department, all large decisions, specifically the budget, needs to come to this group for ratification. Prior to going back to the Fire Commission for adoption, it was introduced last month to the Fire Board, and was given a 5-0 passing to come to, tonight, to you folks for your ratification, and then tomorrow night to the Belmont Fire Protection District Board for their ratification of the budget. Just by way of history, if I could give you a little bit of information about what the department's been doing since this went into effect, as you recall, part of the agreement with the Fire Department was a five-year contract. With the labor group of that five-year contract, there was three years of no salary increases, beginning this year with, or actually, '08-'09 fiscal year, with essentially COLA increases 2.5% each six months. To go through with that part, we also introduced a tiered retirement system back in 2006, where all new employees hired after January 1, 2007, came in under the new 3% of 55 safety program. We've received an additional $800,000 in grants since 2006, one of which, of course, you recall, was the grant for a new fire engine that we took delivery of last year. Our demand for service has gone up. As I gave you a report earlier this year, we are the lowest per capita cost fire department in the County of San Mateo at about $200 per person for fire services. Most other agencies are above 250, into the 300s, and even into the 400s, depending upon the jurisdiction. Essentially, as Mr. Weiss stated, we've taken this budget, done the bare minimum with that, essentially zero increase across the board, with the exception of some of the salary increases that have been projected, and a significant portion of that I absorbed into the budget, and therefore, the increase was just a little bit over 2% for the City of San Carlos. As the slide showed earlier, about a $500,000 increase for the Fire Department, we actually came in at about $196,000 over last year's budget for the City of San Carlos contribution. I have here, I'll give to the clerk a copy of the four-factor formula that's in place, and also some of the information that revolves around how we got to that point of the formula You recall with the four-factor agreement with the Fire Department, it falls under assessed valuation, population, call volume, and fire companies that we have within the jurisdiction. All of those varying each year, but essentially, with the funding formula that's in place, we take those numbers and calculate those, and this year, it gave us a number of roughly 53.5 contribution for the City of San Carlos, 46.5 contribution for the City of, for the Belmont Fire Protection District, excuse me. If you look on page two, there's a number of things that we put back into the budget that are reduced at that, at that rate, at that percentage rate, that being the cost of permits that were issued for our inspections, plan check fees, company inspections, the Advanced Life Support Program that we've been participating in for the last 10 years, and the hazardous materials program that we offer to the county that we receive a revenue, which totals just about $780,000 total for that, those items. Those are reduced back to the agencies at the percentage of the formula, and then reduced from the overall budget piece, and then we calculate that number, which comes into the 53-47 range. We calculate down to the nearest whole number in regards to that. It was actually 53.3 and 47, 46.7, so it actually goes 53-47 for the formula. And the City of San Carlos contribution this year, $6,292,394, is the cost for fire services for this next 12 months. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have in regards to the budget.
Questions for the chief? I'd just like to say that Mr. Grocott and I, along with Mr. Lieberman and Mr. Dickinson of the Belmont Fire District, worked on this, and, I'd just say, worked on it, looked at it and reviewed it after staff proposed it, and we thought they did a great job of trying to cut all the extraneous costs that they could. And again, as Mr. Weiss said, it's a bare bones budget, where some of these, we've not fully funded some of the reserves that we've had. So it has filtered down to the fire, not filtered down, but filtered over to the Fire Department in the same way that we've done the city things. I'd also like to say that starting probably later this year, or certainly in the first part of next year, maybe even later this year, I haven't talked to Mr. Grocott about this, but I'm sure that we will be bringing up the point of the allocations of the four formulas, which we are allowed to do, and revisit this item to see if we can perhaps make this a little bit, I think, a little bit fairer relative to the percentages of calls and population, et cetera, that we have here. I think that's one of the reasons we put it in the original agreement that we made three years ago, is we get a chance to review it periodically, both cities, either city can. And I think we will be bringing this back, I don't think, I know we will be bringing this up, to discuss with Belmont, and seeing if we can adjust some of these figures.
Mr. Mayor, you're correct. This is year four that we start in this fiscal year, and it is time for us to go ahead and review that contract.
Right, thank you, thank you, chief. Anyway, questions, chief? Yes, Mr. Grocott?
Just a comment, because Mr. Royce had brought up overtime under the other item, and of course, it's part of the Fire Department as well. Two things on overtime for us, we have been a little low in positions, and I think the chief's been doing some interviews even recently to hire some laterals over paramedic firefighters, and that'll reduce the overtime that's needed. The other thing, and the chief knows, and Bob knows, serving on the Fire Board, I've asked about overtime quite a bit, because I've seen that as a pretty big number as well. But really, what it comes down to is, if, at least in the case of the Fire Department, being that we're less one company than we were before, probably what we're looking at is not necessarily savings, but converting overtime into actual individuals, and trying to maybe do some cross staffing, so that we can have a truck and an engine and some other things. But I certainly agree with Mr., with the mayor, when he said earlier, you got a 24/7 operation, you got to have somebody. And so he tried to play this balancing act between having an employee versus having, paying overtime. And at some point, indeed, where it gets to be that overtime is so expensive, it perhaps makes sense just to have the person, the body there, doing the work.
We are currently down three positions, and if you kind of calculate that out, that's overtime every single day. One person is to fill that vacancy every day for each of the shifts. So just to, from an overtime piece, that's almost a half a million dollars a year, just in filling those vacancies with overtime. So certainly, we're going to be looking at putting the personnel in there to reduce that piece of that overtime budget, so that number will get reduced.
Chief, why are we down three positions?
Well, we had a couple of vacancies and retirements during the middle of the year, and I was actually waiting to see if there was going to be a countywide fire academy, because I like to participate in the county training piece. And there was not enough interest this year to go ahead and do that. That usually starts every fall. And so, there's been a number of departments that have done some layoffs, so there's some laterals that could come into work immediately, and we would not have to put them through an academy. So with the academy not happening, it seems appropriate to fill those with lateral positions at this time, with some people that have some experience and are already currently certified paramedics. I actually lose them, much like the police department, they're kind of gone for a year in the police department. I lose them for about six months in the Fire Academy. And so, usually, they come on in the late summer, they graduate from the Fire Academy, it's about 20 weeks, and then they come in, and we do kind of our own little orientation with them. So usually, you know, late August, they start. I get them into the department sometime after the first of the year. So this way, I really go another six months, you know, essentially have six months of somebody on the payroll, and I'm still backfilling that position. So by hiring them, it really does allow us to get them right in the, right in the seat right away. Thank you.
So if I could just get back to the chief here, Doug, what, just want to express what drives my question about overtime. You have to realize that a lot of my comments aren't, my comments is, as a council member, I'm out on the street, I'm talking to a lot of people. And I think there is a lot of sensitivity to our residents of San Carlos, and through all of our cities, on employee costs, but mainly pension costs, is probably what I hear most of. And that's because everybody lost their shirt, you know? They didn't get options, they don't, lost their jobs, they lost half of their retirement. And there is, half of it's a negative, you know, perception, but, you know, there's municipalities, people get to retire at 99% of their pay, and all this other kind of stuff. They don't realize what goes into it, and hardworking people we have, and so forth. But our pension costs are high. And so I get a lot of questions on that. Let me jump to the second or third thing, and I think it was driven more from some of the newspaper articles, is people, you know, start asking, they go, what in the hell's going on with overtime? They're asking me about it. And so I look at the figures, and I know it makes sense, but I think we need to do some PR. Not with me. I think you need to do it with the citizens, and have people understand, you know, more and more. And I think you could do that through us. I think we could be messengers of that. I threw out some figures. I threw out a 33%. If that hits the paper tomorrow, people are going to go crazy. And I kind of want them to go crazy, because I want us to have confidence and credibility with our residents, because we're paying people 52%. We brought that pension retirement rate down to 19%. That was good. But for those people that were paying 52% pension, and so they're making good salaries, they got good benefits, they got a good retirement, and they're getting paid overtime. People are going crazy on that.
I agree, and I think there's a happy line in there of finding that medium where it works, works, it falls into play. And we're starting to see the benefits of that two-tiered system.
Okay.
And the more employees we can get in on that, the better our numbers are going to look when we bring them back year after year.
So my summary is, the messenger is here, but I hear what they're saying, okay?
Got it.
That's why.
Okay. There's no more comments. I'd like to call the question, have someone make a motion, please.
I'd move approval of the fire budget for 2009-2010.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the fire budget for 2009-2010. Ms. Bowlen, roll call, please.
Councilmember Ahmad?
No.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item 10C, consideration of agreement in exchange for emergency medical rescue and fire protection services, automatic aid, and first response. Chief Frye?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. This is, two parts of an agreement that you're going to get, this first part tonight is, falls into play with the Advanced Life Support Program that we've been providing for the past 10 years within the county, where we send the closest unit to all, not only just medical calls, but fires, all types of incidents. There's a move and cover plan, there's a deployment plan, there's station ordering that falls into play, and I've attached a staff report and some information as part of that. But the basic crux of this is that our renewal agreement with the Advanced Life Support JPA, which you'll actually be getting at your next meeting, requires us to renew our automatic aid agreement with, so we'll continue to send the closest unit to these responses. And we will continue to get closest units coming in when we have other emergencies that keep our crews busy and the activity level is there. So it's a two, this is part one of a two-part presentation that you'll be receiving, as I stated, the JPA agreement, which is a kind of a reauthorization of participation in, in the Advanced Life Support Program you'll be getting at your next meeting, that we continue to participate in that. There is a revenue that comes from this, about $200,000, $210,000 comes into the agency for providing this service, about $52,000 per company. And part of that pays for dispatch services, JPA, paramedic supervisors to monitor the crews, and make sure that they are sending the right, doing the right things out in the field, that they follow up, and there's reviews of that. But to continue with that program, we need to be able to provide automatic aid to our neighbors and to the balance of the county as a move and cover.
Okay, thank you. Questions for the chief? Mr. Malpe?
Chief, on the, on the agreement, there's clause number five, so you may have answered it, but I didn't see the backup documentation. It was about withdrawal from the ALS system. There's, the final line is, defaulting party shall be responsible for the cost of the defaulted service performed by other parties in this agreement, plus 5% cost. So I was just trying to figure out, well, gee, what's that worth? And it sounds like it's about 200 grand?
It's about $200,000 is what our, what we receive, so there'd be a 5% on top of that as an impact, plus potentially, whatever the other agencies responding could charge us for that call if we were not to make it on our own. This whole program is kind of based on reciprocity. You know, we provide a service, they respond and help us. It's kind of a full, as Mr. Weiss stated earlier, it's part of a bigger picture in the county of how we participate and how we do things. We essentially act like a countywide fire department, but in response, and training, and all sorts of other pieces, but we still have some independence of being within our own local agency. So there could be that loss of revenue, plus a penalty instilled, but the, kind of the gentleman's agreement amongst the chiefs is, let's sit down and try and figure something out before we get to this point, should we get there.
And then just, because I'm going to get jurisdictions messed up, CAL FIRE provides contract services for various jurisdictions. How are they signing this, or are they signing this?
They are on this now, under the new agreement. CAL FIRE will participate as another member of this JPA on the automatic aid piece. They currently only provide services to just the county, unincorporated areas, and Coside Fire Protection District, which is Heflin Bay, Point Montera, that area over there. They provide that service over there. So from an automatic aid perspective, we have kind of two stations that border us, they're within the system. If they're in quarters, they move and cover, and participate in the alarm response. But it's a very sophisticated system that the dispatch center has, where they're monitoring clusters and, and, you know, they know exactly where the locations of the engines are and the trucks, and it tells them when there's a cluster that's empty. We're all hooked in by three stations. So when there's something empty, they know automatically to move somebody in there and make sure that we have some coverage.
Great, thank you very much.
Any questions? Okay, entertain a motion?
Make a motion for approval of the county automatic aid and full boundary drop agreement.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Ms. Bowlen?
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Yes.
Thank you, chief. Okay, Item 10D, consideration of placing a question on November 3, 2009 municipal election, as to whether the positions of city clerk and city treasurer should be appointed. Mr. Weiss?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, we've discussed this at our strategic plan, and one of our goals at the strategic plan or objectives was to bring forward a report on the pros and cons, the advantages... on the pros and cons, advantages, disadvantages of having the elected city clerk and elected city treasurer. As pointed out in the report, the obvious trend is to move away from elected positions in those capacities to appointed positions. And generally, and the details are in the report, but of the 450 cities, 150, 170 have elected positions still. You go back 50, 60 years ago, it's a different time, a different era and different responsibilities, I think, for those respective positions and a much higher percentage were elected. Even this particular year, in the peninsula, the city of Milbury and the city of Burlingame are both taking up this particular issue and placing something on the ballot, my understanding, one for the city treasurer, the other for the city clerk. And so this is, this is something, the trend is obviously moving away from the elected position towards the, towards the appointed position. We still have elected people, it works well currently, I think, in San Carlos in that the city clerk, the elected city clerk is the same as the appointed assistant city clerk. They're one and the same person. And so there's rarely a conflict, I think, between those two hats. With regard to the city treasurer, there's been a long, tenured relationship with Mr. Galvin in that capacity. The arguments generally in favor of the elected tend to be with respect to the democratic process and being closer to the public in terms of the oversight of those functions. Certainly the city clerk's responsibilities historically in this city, I think, were probably even more extensive in some respects than the art today. But on the other hand, there are other aspects of the job with respect to the city clerk that are much more complicated, much more exhaustive in terms of the legal requirements regarding public records requirements, in terms of elections laws. And of course, the technical proficiencies and requirements of that position are just much more advanced today and much more complicated and complex today than what they were years ago. And so there is a need, in my estimation, to have that appointed, in this case, the assistant city clerk who does the bulk of the responsibility of that position. There is the potential for conflict between those positions if the elected is of a different mindset, there can be confusion with respect to the roles of that position regarding the supervision of the clerk's duties. I think you've seen that in some of your neighboring cities over the years. And so we bring it forward to you tonight in terms of whether or not you'd like to put that particular issue before the electorate this fall. The advantage for doing both of these positions, or considering both of these positions this year, is that the effect wouldn't take place until after the end of the terms of the current sitting elected officials. Therefore, the next election that would come up two years from now, it would be clear as to whether or not these positions were to be appointed or whether they were to be elected. You wouldn't have confusion over whether to run or whether to run on that particular issue. You'd have that decision made now, you'd have the chance for the transition over the next two years, and it would be clear two years from now with respect to whether or not people would or would not run for the position. Regarding the city treasurer's position, there, much of the requirements, or many of the requirements and responsibilities and duties for the city treasurer have been either assumed by the city council or have been replaced to some degree, or changed certainly, by new laws and requirements with regards to audit requirements, with regards to the formerly adopted investment policy that this city has adopted. And so the roles and responsibilities of the city treasurer have, I think, to some degree been diminished over the years. Now, both, Mr. Galvin has been able to attend this afternoon's, or this evening's meeting. I wasn't sure he was going to be able to make it, so I'm glad that he was able to get out of his other meeting and make it to this particular meeting so that he could address any questions that the city council might have directly of the city treasurer. Obviously, the city clerk is here as well. Both have submitted correspondence in tonight's packet regarding their take on the advantages and disadvantages from their perspective. And they're in those positions and so I would obviously take those to heart. From the staff's perspective, you know, I guess, again, the trend, the good government trend towards having professionals in those capacities and the, you know, the certified, and having that as a requirement and a responsibility for the position provides assurances that you'll have those minimum standards and qualifications if you have the appointed position. With the elected, it requires that you be a resident of the city and that you be 18 years of age. Doesn't necessarily require anything above and beyond that, other than that you're electable. And if anything, it suggests that you are restricted in terms of your talent pool to those people living in your community. So finding someone that has that expertise, you know, we've been fortunate, like I say, in San Carlos with the way that it has worked. From our perspective at the staff level, you know, the one concern I would have about putting this on the ballot, I certainly would recommend it under normal circumstances. The one concern I have is I don't want it to detract from the revenue measure. That, to me, is the most important thing that we have before the electorate this November if you choose to put that measure on the ballot. We've talked with Tramitola, they actually did not feel that having this issue on the ballot would necessarily detract from the measure, and so that has comforted me somewhat. But if it's going to be a controversial issue, if it's going to cause a lot of consternation amongst the folks in this community, I'm just not sure that it's something that is worth the, the, the time and the effort and the potential confusion, given the importance of the revenue measure and the need for having, I think, a clear understanding of the importance of that particular matter. This is important. I'm not sure that it, though, holds a candle to the other decision that's before the, before the community. With that, I can certainly answer any questions you might have with staff. Like I say, both the city treasurer and the city clerk are here as well to address any questions that the council might have.
Questions, Mr. Lewis?
I have no questions. Mr. Maude?
No questions.
Yeah, I have one, is that, actually two. The city clerk, we, you know, we have the city clerk and the assistant city clerk is, or, yeah, which is one and the same person. So in terms of cost to the city, because one's paid one way and one's paid another way and, you know, sort of a real salary and then a stipend kind of thing. But with the city treasurer, he's paid same as we are, which is more like a stipend.
With benefits, potentially.
Sure. But what I'm getting at is, you know, Mr. Galvin probably costs us about 13, I think his whole budget is $15,000. So if we had a person that's appointed as a city treasurer, wouldn't they get paid something more like $90,000?
No, I mean, the government code, I think, provides for a city treasurer, but it would simply be a title that would be attached to either the administrative services director or the finance manager. It wouldn't substantially change the nature of their position, nor would it change their compensation, in my estimation.
Okay. And actually, my next question has more to do with probably us discussing it, but when I read through our current city treasurer's correspondence, he's kind of indifferent to the whole thing, but he does say if we're going to go that route in order to keep the public review, if you will, of city finances, that we have a finance committee. And I wonder if we're going to put this on the ballot, maybe we should put it on the ballot that way, where we have an appointed city treasurer, but at the same time, it's on the ballot that we would, we would create a finance committee. I think that might be advisable.
Mr. Royce?
Yeah, I just, my thoughts are regarding, actually, I agree very much with the appointment due to the specific technical skills. And you know when you have a good clerk, and you probably know when you don't have a good clerk. We're not in that situation. We know what it's like to have a good clerk. But if I relate to other positions we appoint, like our attorney and the city manager, I do want to make sure that if council's appointing, that we do have some kind of management of the position, i.e. we set some objectives, we do some evaluations, and we don't assume a city clerk's going to be here for 40 years. But, you know, every, periodically, every five or 10 years, we, we kind of look and look at the skill sets and look at available pools to maintain the integrity and the level of, of that job. So I just, I'd like to get other council comments on that, but by just appointing, I want to make sure there is some, if we're appointing, we have some kind of management responsibilities for these employees that report to us, that we've appointed.
And of course, my question is, would they report to us or report to you? I would think you would hire them, not us. Frankly, it would be at your discretion. It may technically revert to the city council, but in many cases, if not most cases, that authority is delegated to the manager.
So who evaluates our city attorney?
We do, but the city attorney reports to you. Yeah, but that's different.
That's different.
We don't import the park and rec guy.
So that's good, as long as it's different, we understand that. So the clerk will be your personnel person, which is good. I just want to make sure it's identified.
We go either way. It would be at the council's discretion. We could make a decision either way, we want to do it. My assumption was, and again, a little different than yours, is that that, these would be positions that the city manager would, would, just like park and rec or, or public works. I've seen it, I've seen it both ways. In La Quinta, when I was first there, actually, it was an appointed position by the city council. They changed it and had it actually.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, I didn't matter which way, I just wanted to make sure it was one or the other, but that it was being done.
My question would be, if we don't do it in this ballot, can we do it in 2010? Don't we still have time? You could do it in 2010, next year. But we don't have, we don't have a municipal election until 2011. You might be able to do it during a special election, I think there'd be more cost. But that would cost additional dollars to do that. I'm concerned like you are that you're, the, I think one item on a city ballot is one, and if you put two or three, and this will be three, because you'd have, or maybe you'd make it two, I don't know if you'd combine them or not. Probably not. Yeah, and so then you have three items, and I think that, the resources that would have to go into educating everybody, I mean, because the first thing people hear is, oh, somebody's going to appoint somebody and not elect them. Oh, no. I mean, that's not a great idea. And to educate it, that's the thing that's concerning me. So it doesn't seem controversial to me. That's, that's, it, it. Well, it may not be controversial, but it might not win. Periodically, I'll have a minority opinion, but I just. Periodically? I mean, I wouldn't, pardon the pun, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't think people would galvanize around these issues. Whoa, sorry. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Hey. Figure our audience is about seven at this point. But we could, but they could be bowled over. Or bowled over. Yeah. A little late. Are you here all week? Try the veal. I guess, my only thing is, I certainly wouldn't want to do anything that's going to, you know, detract, but I, I mean, is it, is it really controversial? Has anybody run against you guys in the last 37 years?
No.
I don't think the issue. I just, I mean, to me, there's, I'm not, you know, no facts, but I'm not sure, like, let's go out and get the pitchforks and figure whether these are appointed or. If we put it on the ballot this time, or in 2010, what's the, I mean, I apologize for putting you on the spot, what does it cost to do that?
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, a special election is expensive because we would be the only ones on the ballot. You can be reaching, Scoot was $76,000.
Right. So if we went in 2011, that's too late? The difficulty in 2011 is that you would have people running potentially for those two positions. I see, okay, okay. So if we do, but we don't expect that 2009, would it add substantially to the dollars just by adding an item or two on the budget?
No, it would just be some printing costs.
Yeah, so a thousand, two thousand, or whatever it would be. Very nominal.
We're paying already.
Okay, okay. Well, it's up to the council what we want to do, if we want to, if we want to recommend that we put it on the ballot or if we feel like it's not something that we want to do.
Would staff bring it back to us as a draft of how it would look on the ballot?
Or is it? Do we have time to do that?
Partly because we haven't, we haven't fully fleshed this out, and I hadn't thought until Mr. Royce brought it up about, you know, actually having the council appoint these individuals. My opinion, with all due respect to Mr. Lewis, who doesn't see, you know, I can understand you don't really see any problem with it. Myself, you know, I, I don't really like the idea of giving up positions that are elected, where the people have some control over those positions. I think it gives, it's just, to me, it's good governance. But I'm not going to argue the point, you know, if we can put it on the ballot and let the people decide, that's, that's fine. I've actually wanted that for years because I haven't been comfortable with what previous council did with Ms. Bowlen's position. I don't, I have no, you know, it's not disparaging to Ms. Bowlen, but I don't think it's a comfortable position to be in where you're both the city clerk and the assistant city clerk. It's just kind of an odd thing, and it was brought on by previous councils, or previous council. So I'd like to get the issue cleaned up and put it on the ballot and get it repaired. But that being said, there's, I, there's two issues. If it's going to go on the ballot, I'd like to see it go on the ballot where it's appointed by the council. And number two, that we would also have a finance committee.
I don't necessarily disagree with the second part of it. I like the finance committee concept if we, if we don't have a, you know, treasurer. But the technical, I really get scared on the first part, only because literally Joe Smith could run for treasurer, I mean, and just win. He'd have no, no technical skills whatsoever.
Right, but what I'm saying as far as, if we're going to put it on the ballot, that we put it on the ballot, that the position would be appointed by the council.
I'm sorry, you're saying, I apologize, I misspoke. Again, the only reason I think this, that city staff should do, or, well, we could discuss it until the cows come home, it's almost 10:30. But I agree, can we bring this back? Can you have some sort of language? What we would do is we would draft the language for putting it on the ballot, and then the council could discuss that language or make amendments to it.
Quick question, have we ever put on the ballot, commitment to a committee? I don't object to it, I mean, I think we should have, you know, I like the financial committee and I like all that, but I've just never seen in an election where, where the populace elects a committee.
Well, they wouldn't elect a committee, they'd just approve the concept, I think, which what you're saying. Approve the concept, we'd appoint the committee.
Well, and we, I just want to clarify that, we already have one ad hoc. We had a couple of goals regarding budgeting, you know, we got into the core and we got into the financial report. We should, you know, I'd kind of like to reserve it to let the, let the committee come back to council and say, you know, do you want us to continue or not? I mean, that's kind of a whole separate.
Well, all I'm saying is, I think it's good work and I think it's important, I think it's great that it's been done. I just don't know how you put that in elected language, that, and whether or not it's appropriate to tie.
Well, it's just like you, we have a planning commission, we have.
We haven't voted on that.
But that's not an elected position. Those, in other words, the popular hasn't said, you know, I'd like to vote for a planning commission.
No, but in giving up something, the suggestion would be that we would have language that would direct the creation, and I guess that would be done through our municipal code, that we would create a finance committee.
Right.
We're not electing a finance committee, we're creating a finance committee, and then it would be up to council to interview and appoint people to the finance committee.
Maybe more work and more cost.
I mean, it would be. I mean, you know, if you had a committee or a commission of three to five people that were, I mean, that's, we would have to staff it, we would have to comply with the Brown Act, we would be doing minutes. Frankly, if we're going to go that route, my recommendation, let's leave it alone.
Yeah, I'd rather keep it flexible. If we need one, we could create one.
Why don't we do that? Come back, you come back with some language and maybe the way that you feel it should be, and I'm not denigrating your comment, Mr. Grocott, whatever your name is over there, Mr. Grocott.
I know, it's late.